Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is a special meeting of the City Council. And I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rollesburgin?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt?
Here. Let the record show that Ms. Hodges was here during closed session and was involved in that deliberation, but was unable to stay for the remainder of the meeting, and we wish her well in tonight's evening plans that she has. May I ask for a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act Procedures for Special Call.
Thank you. We'll turn to public comments. Anyone wishing to discuss any matters within the jurisdiction -- excuse me, within matters discussed on the agenda, again, please confine your comments during the special meeting to that which is agendized. Please come forward at this time. Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments, and we'll go to our first legislative item, which is the Visitor Center Architectural Services. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This matter before you is the actual architectural services for the Visitor Center. As you know, we're renovating the freight gas station, tramway gas station, for the Visitor Center, and I would ask Mr. Raymond, our Director of Community and Economic Development, to give the report, but I would also ask the architects, O'Donnell and Escalante, if they could come forward to address and answer any questions the council would have after Mr. Raymond gives his report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Good evening, Mr. Raymond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The item before you has been revised a little bit over the last couple of days. As we explained in a previous meeting, we're working on a fairly tight timeframe. The original staff report and resolution was for a contract for $91,000. The revised contract is $72,100. As you may recall, when we originally put the architect's contract before you in January, it was our direct -- you directed us to break the contract into two. We had an original contract for $18,000 to get us through the conceptual design phase. We're drawing toward the end of that contract, and now we need to proceed to the second, the big contract, where they actually produce the plans and bring them forward for entitlement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the contract. We've gone over the design, and I'm sure you don't want to get into design issues, but let me just describe some of the changes. One was that we reduced the amount of reimbursables. We took out the post occupancy phase, and then there were some revisions related to the bidding, their activity in the bidding process. With the second contract that's on the agenda tonight, with Dave Johnston's contract, there's going to be more involvement in the bidding with that contractor and less involvement in the architect, so it wasn't needed to be in the contract. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like Mr. Ready said, the architects are here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, John. Council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
John, on the architect's contract is typically, that we always have, and it's pretty much standard, if the project comes in cost-wise over, within 10% over what the budget is, then the architects are required to bring it, to do what it takes with the owner to get it back into budget. What is the budget number?
The budget number...
That this would apply to?
The -- that's a good question. The budget number that we're using is a $737,000 number that we were given as a cost estimate a couple of weeks ago. We've made several design changes over the last couple of weeks, and that's actually caused that amount to go down, the hard cost to go down from $730 or so down to $658. So the -- but we've -- we're using, but we did not have a contingency in the original cost number. The $737 did not include a contingency. So we're using the 10% cost number to bring it back up to about $737 because in a project of this sort, there's a couple of other issues that we're still addressing, like security, potentially maybe we'd want to have cameras and things like that that were not sort of figured in originally. So we're using the $737 as the number. And that's a long answer to get back to.
Now, in the -- in the -- I'm going to just start at the $658 number. If the $658 number includes Mr. Johnston's services, assuming number two gets approved?
That's correct.
For a total of $136?
$130 some odd, yeah.
Okay. Now...
$136,378.
That's in the $658 number, correct?
Right.
That...
Well, no, that isn't.
That is in the $658 number? His $136?
Right.
Or...
What's in the $658 number is, there's some debate because we think it should be a percentage of the construction costs and not just a flat number because the cost of construction down at $658 is lower than it was when he gave the number for the hundred and whatever his contract is tonight, so that should be coming down.
And when we did the calculations at the office, we were talking about direct cost, not total cost. So it was the cost of construction, not the cost that were outside, you know, the indirect cost. So that was my understanding.
Well, if you look at Mr. Johnston's number, and I don't know the exacts, but it was, let's just say $136, a portion of that was pre-construction services, which certainly would not be a cost to the project, a construction cost.
Right.
Right?
And actually, that, I think the estimate on that was about $25,000, and that was not part of the original $737 in the cost estimates. That is an additional 25 or so to the project.
So the...
So you're right about that.
The thing I'm trying to get to is what is the construction cost of this project? How are -- I mean, I understand where you are and why you're there. What I'm trying to define is what's hard cost, what's soft cost on this because the architects are going to be responsible for what's hard cost, not what's soft cost.
Right.
And so is the under -- and the purpose of Mr. Johnston is the purpose that we've done, that we've gone through before with Turner several times, is to get pre-construction services, number one, to hopefully bring us in on budget so we don't, you don't have to do any rework. But that number would, what I'm trying to do is that number would come off the $658, his pre-construction number would come off. He has a number that's a normal contractor's fee that you would pay whether he was doing pre-construction services or not, whether it was bid or wasn't bid. That number's going to be there anyway. If that number that comes off is 25 or whatever it is, then that construction cost would drop by that number.
Well, actually, wouldn't that be, it would be added to that number, wouldn't it?
Well, not if you're trying, not if you're telling, I mean, that's what I'm trying to find out. Is it added to it or is it taken away? Because if you're saying it's added to it, then the cost of the project is higher than $730, if you want to carry a 10% contingency.
Well, the numbers that we were working with for the last month or so, the original $737 was based on Dave costing it out as a normal general contractor, which would have included a normal GC fee, based on a percentage, did not include pre-construction services. So I think it's our estimate that the pre-construction services, in negotiating the agreement with him, were about $25,000 or so. So if you take the $136 and subtract out $125, you have about $111. So the $111 becomes part of that $737 or part of that $658, but the 25, you would have to say is over and above, over and above the $658. So I know this is really confusing.
What's the number you're asking us to approve tonight?
Well, we're asking you to approve their contract at 72.
Right.
We're asking you to approve Dave's contract at $136, and then the other contract at not to exceed 40. But the cost number, including contingency, which should include Dave's contract, and I'm going to have to check whether the 25 is over and above that, should be about $737. But that should be inclusive of the DW Johnson, but exclusive of the architect and the owner's rep, with the exception of about $25,000 in pre-construction.
What I'm trying to do is establish the price of the architects, what their budget is, and I would think they would want to know what their budget is before they sign a contract. And I think we need to define it for them. So I don't know where to go. If we're looking at $658 construction, that was, Lance and I, that's the modification of what Mr. Johnston previously gave you the number. That's the modification you've been working on for the last few weeks?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Johnston's number, $136, was based on the previous design, which the scope has changed. So the assumption would be Mr. Johnston's number would come down, okay? Okay. Now, the pre-construction is probably going to basically stay the same, I would think, okay, if it's 25. That 25, where does that, that 25 should not go off the construction cost, but it should be in the budget for the project. Is that what you're saying, John?
That's right. It's not in the construction cost, but it'll be in the overall project budget.
As would Mr. Fontana's number.
Right.
Is Mr. Fontana's number reflected in the $737?
No, it's not.
So complete, the complete project, if you stick with the $737, is plus Mr. Johnston's pre-construction?
25.
At 25, and Mr. Fontana?
40. So you're up at about $800,000.
So we're looking at eight?
Plus architecture, at another 72.
Plus what we've already expended with the architects?
18. So 890.
Now, is, and the 18 is not reflected in the 72?
No.
Okay. Somebody else have any questions?
I appreciate the line of questions you've got because I think it's very important and we understand what the actual number is. You gave me no greater than, no larger than, will not exceed something that caps this, and some of your discussion's been very insightful, and I'm not sure I know exactly what the budget is based on where you're going. So I'm going to let you continue to shake this out for us. Where's your biggest concern, Mr. Mills?
My, the biggest concern is we don't have a budget, a budget for the project. If Mr. Johnston's number is based on a plan that we're not building, then his number is not right, unless we're looking at approving a not to exceed versus a hard number. I mean, right now, you're asking us to approve a hard number, not a not to, a not to exceed number.
The, for purposes of this contract, the, this provision is, maybe has a little bit more limited. It really has to do with the obligation of the architect to put forward a design within a number that you've established. You're saying that this project should hit this number. So the theory is, when you go out to bid it and you get all the bids in, it's going to be at that number, and the legal import of the number is that if it's more than 10% away, he's got to do the redesign work at their expense. Now, what you decide to put in that budget could be somewhat arbitrary. It's just that when you put those elements in and then you go out to get those bids and costs, you ought to be talking about apples and apples. This budget is a budget only in the sense of this control on the architect. The budget could end up being something different than that, but in terms of the control on the architect, it's this number. And the theory is that, you know, the scope changes, then the architect has to come back and say, well, wait, now I have a problem with this number, and get it adjusted.
And I'm not looking to put, I'm not looking, the thing I'm looking for is, I'm not, I'm looking to establish the design number that these architects need to design to. I mean, that's, it's as simple as that. I don't want to let them think they're designing a $700,000 project when they're really designing a $500,000.
Absolutely. If the, what you're looking at, the intent of the council is that what they design is really a $500,000 something, yeah, if you put a $700,000 number in it, communicates a wrong message.
Mr. Mills?
Yes?
When we did our cost analysis based on the schematic design drawings, the numbers, the $658,000 was based on the parking lot, the bathroom addition made out of steel components, the interior TI and the landscape. Those were the numbers we got because that's the way we base our services. Because it doesn't make sense if the number went, kept going up because more people are attached to the process, then our number will go up, and it doesn't make sense. The amount of work doesn't change. The scope of physical work does not change, whether you have two people or 20 people working on it. So that's how we based our number, and the $658 is based on that, on the physical, you know, direct cost.
But your $658 does include a contract, a normal contractor's fee? As if, as if it were bid straight?
Yes.
Straight, straight, I mean, the street cost, I guess, is probably the way it is. So, so Mr. Johnston's fee should come, should be not beyond that number. Mr. Johnston's fee should be included in that $658. And I'm just going to, if Mr. Johnston's fee is $100,000 for the construction, not for pre-construction, then your cost for the structure, exclusive of the contractor's fee, would be $558. Can you understand?
I understand what you're saying.
That's what I'm trying, trying to establish because you need to know. I mean, you, you need to know what that number is.
Well, when we sat down with the metal fabricator, for example, we got his cost as a subcontractor. When we sat down with the landscape consultant, it was his cost as a subcontractor. So the $658 really includes just subcontractors.
So you're saying it doesn't include Mr. Johnston?
That's what I'm saying.
So now we're talking about $658, plus, plus the contingency of 10, plus $136, plus 40. And I have a concern when the cost of this project is, gets that high. I'm of a major concern for the scope of the work.
Can I ask for a breakout? You gave four components on a parking restroom TI landscape. What is your budget to build the parking lot?
Lance, you have that number?
Aside from design fees and so on?
The actual construction?
The direct construction cost for the parking lot is estimated at $170,000.
And what do you got for the restrooms?
The restroom building is approximately $200,000.
What do you got for TIs?
Or, I'm, excuse me, it's $145,000.
$145,000 for the bathroom.
Thank you. What do you have for TIs?
The TI is $200,000.
And what do you have for landscape?
The landscape is $75,000.
Okay. Now, respectively, do you have your fees broken down for those four components also?
No.
Okay, so your fee covers parking landscape, restroom TI, and all four of them? And you're going to then pay out to have a landscape architect do it?
Correct.
All right, so your design fee, architect fee, is how much for all four of those components?
For all four of them?
72,000.
72,000. Right. Okay.
Including reimbursables.
Okay. And then you've got, you've got the construction component, which is the management fee, which is $136, $137? Is that right? And that covers all four of those? And then you've got a city rep service for $40,000? And is the 10% contingency in here?
If, no. John was suggesting that $737, what's that difference? I don't remember. The difference between $658 and $737 is what the contingency was.
Right. It's about, it's about 12%.
Is that what you're showing? All four categories? $170, $145, $275?
$585.
What?
$160?
$170, $145, $200, and the last one is 75. Restrooms are $145?
It's $590.
So it is $590.
Those were the, those were the four things added up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, $590 for the four of them.
I thought the number was $658.
That's where I'm trying to go with this. Okay, so now we go from $590. How do we get to $658? What gets us to $658?
It's $590 on just working on the numbers.
Okay.
That's how it got to $590. When we were informed that the general conditions needed to be included in this, we could conceivably get the direct construction cost down to $590. So we have between $590 and $658 as the contractor's fee, which is $78,000, but it doesn't quite add up to what, what his, the next item on the agenda, what his contract's coming up to.
78 or 68?
But he was going off the previous plans, too, so there's, there's some modification.
There's some modification.
Potential modification.
Okay, so the contractor's fee is $68,000, and then we've got $137,000 for construction and management, over and above the 68?
No, no, no.
I'm trying to figure out how we get the...
The contractor's fee is included in the 137.
You do the 137 in lieu of a contractor's fee.
Right. 25 of that 137 is pre-construction.
Why don't we continue it and work out the numbers?
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'd second that, and I'd also suggest if we have additional questions, that they would be forwarded so that they would return with all the answers that we have, all the questions that we have, I'm sorry.
Let me ask this. If we continue, is it capable of the team at the table to go in the other room and bring it back at the end of the meeting, or does it require a delay of another week? My concern is about delay in the project for a week.
I don't have a problem.
I don't know if all the parties are here to answer all of the questions, so I think the next meeting would probably be better.
Mr. Oden, I think we can answer the architectural questions and the direct cost questions.
But there are quite a few other questions that are addressed to Mr. Johnston's portion. Can you answer those?
No.
Then I would suggest that we bring it back.
Okay. So continue it for a week?
Well, then you can continue items two and three.
Because the questions aren't as much about your section as it is about the next.
Yeah, two and three.
The whole thing.
And the comment I have, based on what Mr. Oden says, I mean, I don't mind getting the, getting my questions to staff, but I didn't get the answer until this afternoon or before noon today. I didn't see everything I needed to see. So, and I still don't have an understanding of how that construction number gets there.
And after tonight's discussion, neither do I.
All right, so you're going to want to continue items one, two, and three for, to what date?
A week.
Bring it back in a week? Is there a motion then?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Rollesburgin and second by Mr. Oden to continue item one, two, and three for a week to finalize numbers. I suggest, Mr. Mills, you stay closely aligned with this project for the next week, try to bring the numbers back. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Thank you. Item four is traffic signal installation. Mr. Ready?
Mr. Mayor, this was brought back from last week due to a lack of quorum because one member did have to abstain. Since we do have the requisite number of members here this evening, this is asked to be approved, and Mr. Barack is here this evening if, to give the staff report. I would ask David Barack to come forward. Thank you.
We have quorum tonight. We're not in jeopardy there.
No, we, actually, we had a quorum last week. It was just one member did need to abstain.
And he still does.
And he still does, but we still have a quorum even with that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Business Reasons?
Yes. I have a client on both sides of the signal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mills. We'll await your departure from the chamber, and then we'll turn to Mr. Barack and for our staff report. All right. This is the Sunrise Way and Sunny Dunes Road Traffic Signal Installation. Mr. Ready, we'll turn to your city engineer.
Thank you. This is a project that was bid, that was on the consent calendar last week, as we just stated. The bids came in slightly below the engineer's estimate. It's a traffic signal at Sunrise and Sunny Dunes, partially funded by the Desert Chapel, and staff recommends approval of the award to Steiny and Company, the low bidder.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Council questions, comments?
All I can say is this is needed. If you're trying to get out of Sunny Dunes and turn left, it's tough. I'll move the minute order.
And I'll second it.
And I appreciate that, and I think the need for this is not just Sunday-based.
No, it is not.
It is during the weekdays. It's also a welcome relief for traffic movement. I'll ask for a roll call, please, from Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mills, absent. Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rollesburgin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. It is deemed unanimous, 3-0. We'll adjourn the special meeting and convene now in our joint City Council Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Study Session. Adjourn this meeting until next Wednesday, the 20, no, 29th of April, 7, 30th of April. Thank you. At 7:00. Do you require a roll call on the study session, Madam Clerk? Let's turn now to an announcement of closed session items, please, by our city attorney.
Yes, council agent in closed session. The items on the closed session agenda, real property negotiations with the agency concerning Plaza Theater, we gave a status report, no action was taken. For the city, real property negotiations with Desert Water Agency, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations with the youth center, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure litigation and initiation of litigation was not discussed. We discussed labor negotiations, gave a status report, no action was taken. And security of airport facilities, gave a status report, no action was taken.
Thank you, sir. We'll turn to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, if there are any public comments, please come forward at this time. Again, seeing no one, here's one. Again, seeing no one, um, here's one, very good, and come up forward, sir. I believe the timer is behind me, and it counts down from three. Good evening, make sure your microphone is on, the little black button in the front, make sure the green light is on, and you'll have your opportunity to make comments, sir. Take your time.
Hey, I'm ready to go.
Good to go, sir, when you're ready.
Okay, my name is Willie Holland, um, from Pastor Push Apostolic Ministry, I'm working in Desert Island Gateway Community. And before you have, um, a code enforcement violation that I appealed, and is for the following reasons. I don't think I'm being treated fairly, uh, and I'm a fighter, and I don't agree with a lot of things that's happening within the city as far as, uh, the eminent domain, plus the, the way the people in Desert Island Gateway area is being treated. I think they've been, um, purposely picked out to, uh, for a selfish, uh, for a selfish reason to eliminate them again without any accountability or, or even consideration. Okay, so I've been through two long, dry, and odd city battles, and both cases were dismissed. I've been in criminal court, and now I'm proceeding with a different approach this time. I'm appealing, and I wanna, uh, get to the people that are doing the wrong things, because everybody's not wrong. Also, I presented to you, uh, a proposal to put a senior citizen program in housing in the Desert Island Gateway area with a building that you have already, uh, given a contractor the, the, um, okay to go ahead and demolish it. It's another negative to the community. I'm there all the time, uh, I plan on being a solution to the problem, not, uh, a hindrance to the problem, or not, uh, and because I believe that you overcome evil with good, uh, you keep fighting, and I will not give up on my community, I will not give up on myself, and I will not give up on God. Okay, there's a building that you're gonna demolish, which is a negative thing. Uh, you've had two buses out there, and to no avail, because it's the same system. But you've allowed this, you know, the people that got busted, you know, they're not, they're innocent people. And basically, the criminals are still going out there doing their thing. I do a lot of walking, I do a lot of praying, uh, the drug activity is being supported by outsiders, not the people there, because most of them are homeless, most of them don't have any money, you know, other than picking up cans or whatever they can. They're not doing as much stealing, but late, late at night, early in the morning, uh, the problem is not being addressed. Uh, the kids have taken that corner over, and I think, uh, that you're making another statement, and the statement is, we can't do nothing but tear down stuff.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Very good, seeing no one, we'll close public comments, we'll turn now to our council comments, questions, or reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Um, yesterday, Mr. Mills and I, uh, did a, participated in a program, Money Matters, with the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce. And I'd just like to say a special thank you to our public safety, our police, our fire, and to the promoter of the White Party for making sure that this event was better and safer than last year, special thank you.
Wow, world record. Jeez, all this free time now.
Okay, you want the full?
No, I am more than happy to accept a brief report, it's, it's music to my ears. Let's turn to our city manager for comments and follow-up on requests, I mean, no request is something to follow up on, I guess, huh?
Actually, Mayor, I, um, the, one thing I would like to report, last evening, Scott Meisler and I, Director of Parks and Rec, uh, we did attend the Palm Springs Unified School District Meeting, our request, council's request was on for the, uh, piece of thirty-foot strip adjacent to the Swim Center, uh, at Sunrise Park for the skate park, and, uh, it was approved five oh. So I did wanna convey that message, and, uh, we will begin the skate park in earnest, and you will be seeing those, uh, documents and things, construction, in the very near future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Let's turn now to our city council study session topics, um, let's go to our rental housing inspection program.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, this issue before you this evening is going to be a presentation. It's a presentation regarding the rental housing inspection program, uh, it is from a company called, uh, City Works, and, uh, Mr. Stanley Jordan is, uh, the presenter this evening, and I would like to call him up, uh, at this time, if you would. Uh, Mr. Stanley Jordan is president of the company, of City Works, Inc., and he has about a fifteen-to-twenty-minute presentation, and then he would, uh, certainly, uh, be open to answer any questions at that time.
Very good.
With that, uh, and I know he has a handout for council, and with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Jordan, and we welcome you, sir, thank you.
Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening, uh, mayor, council, and administration. Uh, as they pass the documents around to you, um, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of a update and history about City Works. We've been around since nineteen ninety-one, uh, focusing on solely municipal services with government. Um, we actually have a cup, two divisions, a public works division and an inspections divisions. Uh, the public works division focuses on, uh, actually providing public work services for entire municipalities, uh, like a Palm Springs. And then the inspection division focuses on building inspection plan reviews and, uh, program which we, uh, entitled the Rental Housing Inspection Program. It has been said that the heart and soul of any community is the neighborhoods and the people that reside within those neighborhoods. It, it is critical to the preservation and the quality of life that's perceived within that community. Um, as I have been traveling around the country now for the past couple of years, talking to bodies such as yourself, uh, even more recently, within the last six months, I've been in Trotwood, Ohio, and, uh, Charlotte, North Carolina, and Galveston, Texas, and, and, uh, DeKalb County, Georgia. Uh, we're all talking about the same thing, because it's amazing to me that I find that the, there is a very similar problem going around this country. And that is, nobody that owns a home wants to live to the left, to the right, or across the street from a poor rental property. Uh, everybody wants their neighborhood, their block, to look its best. And, uh, and, and it doesn't make a difference whether we're in Palm Springs, California, or whether we're in Birmingham, Michigan, and, and affluent area back in Michigan, the city that we take care of. Um, it is all very similar problems. Uh, they want those properties to be maintained to the same standards of private homeownership. And the way that you address that is through a proactive program versus a reactive program. What I find around the country is most programs are reactive, meaning they allow problems to occur, they allow a lot of violations to build up before action is taken. Well, with a, when you adopt an ordinance that basically requires that every single rental property, be it single-family or multifamily, be inspected every two years for compliance with basic property maintenance standards, international property maintenance standards. There's, uh, one that, two, that pretty much focuses on property maintenance issues. When you adopt that, you are taking a very proactive position in ma- ensuring that these landlords, a lot of them unfortunately are absentee landlords, that don't see what's going on with the property from a day-to-day basis. But, uh, when you adopt this type of a program, you ensure that the quality of these homes are going to be maintained to the same standards that you would expect your private homeownership. Um, it is done consistently, and this is something that we have fine-tuned around the country in being able to, um, handle the administration and the inspection portion of it. So, what I did is, I, I'm gonna tell you, the reason why I'm here is strictly coincidental. Uh, Palm Springs is, is really like a home away from home for me, I've been coming here every year for about the last twelve years, and I'm an avid golfer, and I, I just come here every year and play golf, a couple of times a year. Well, one night, I, I happened to be, uh, sitting in my hotel room here and watching television, and being that local government is my business, I saw a council meeting going on, and it's, it struck me, you know, I am on vacation, but I have to realize this, this is a city too, you know? And I wondered, do they have the issues that I'm running into with a lot of the other cities that I deal with? And so, one thing led to another, and I, I met Mr. Oden, Councilman Oden, and, um, and, and I'm here. But, uh, the detail of the booklet that you have, the first page pretty much gives you a summary of if you adopt a rental ordinance, well, I should back up. I gave you a sample ordinance, and that sample ordinance is just like a draft template of what that ordinance looks like if you decided to, uh, adopt something like that. But the first page gives you an overview of everything that is a responsibility of City Works and what the responsibility of the municipality is, 'cause it is a joint effort, it is a partnership that we would develop with the city in order to address this issue and maintain those, the quality of your housing stock over the years to come. Um, we handle everything from soup to nuts, meaning we handle all the, um, uh, administration portion of sending letters out from day one, advising landlords, uh, which, by the way, eighty to ninety percent of landlords in every community we go to do not live in the community in which they rent property. So, they're going to be everywhere else around the state, everywhere else around the country. Uh, it is amazing to me, every time we go into a new community and we find out, uh, hypothetically, we're in East Point, Georgia, and there's ownership in, uh, Florida, in Toronto, Canada, it's just all over the country. So it seems definitely would let you know that they don't know what's going on, even though they may have property management companies when it comes to the multifamily units. But that initial letter gives you a sample of, uh, what the letter would read, uh, we have sample documentation of inspection reports. There is a checklist, there is a landlord inspection checklist that we send out as a part of our initial mailing, and, and what's so great about this uh, is that the landlord gets to know in advance, before we get there, what we're looking for. Because we're not trying to make this a hardship on landlords, we're not trying to, um, uh, develop any kind of a, a bad relationship with them. If anything, we do our best to work with them to correct those issues in a timely manner, though. Um, we also, I have in there, um, uh, a list of references of other communities that I would say, if you have any interest whatsoever in considering this program, don't hesitate to call those references on that last page of those other communities. And they can tell you the impact that it's had on those communities. Uh, the positive effect, it will definitely, definitely address any blight or any, uh, deficient, uh, areas that you have within the community that you want to address. Um, one of the things that it also does is it has a positive impact on improving the quality and beautification in neighborhoods. 'Cause see, what happens is, in, if we're addressing single-family homes in that area, and once private homeowners start to see that, wow, the city is making these, 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 uh, rental properties improve the quality of their homes, well, I don't mind doing a little work to mine, I'll start fixing mine up a little better, 'cause they've been living next door, across the street, from a poor rental property for so many years. They've decided they're gonna invest in their property more, because they know that it's gonna be a return on them as a, as their property appreciates in value. Uh, we have a number of communities that, when they've adopted this systematically over a period of years, property values without question increase in that community versus a community that, that does not have a rental inspection program. Uh, and one of the reasons why I'm here is because I utilize the U.S. Census Bureau for a lot of my demographic information, and when I looked at the city of Palm Springs, and I see that nearly forty percent of your occupied housing is rental properties, that tells me that the rental investment community is targeting the city of Palm Springs as an area to buy properties and rent them out. Because obviously, they can get them in, they can get in here, or get in certain areas for a lower dollar amount, and be able to have a certain rent, and it's all about the margins, the amount of profit that they can make on that property. Um, so, you know, nobody goes into a million-dollar home and rent it out. So, it's, it's just, when I see that, I see, well, this is an area that I, I need to talk to, because realistically, um, if, if it was not a targeted area, this number would be around fifteen percent. In, in your traditional bedroom communities where you have mostly homeownership, it'd be around fifteen percent. But when I see that number is approaching forty percent, thirty-nine point two percent to be exact, uh, roughly eight thousand rentals in the city, that tells me that's a lot, uh, and that's a good mixture between single-family and multifamilies that I have here. I have done some cost analysis, I've provided that information to, uh, the manager. Um, the program pays for itself, that's, that's the key part right there, is that it's not an additional expense to the city. It pays for itself based on the fee structure that's adopted by the city with the ordinance. Um, so I have numbers to show how that works, um, and, uh, I guess at this time, I would, uh, take any specific questions, because I'm, I'm sure there's some things going through your mind, it's the, how this works, and, and, and it's probably easier for you just to ask me directly.
Good, thank you. Council, questions? Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Of the forty percent or thirty-nine point two, uh, you said you have a breakdown between multifamily, single-family, what is the single family?
Single family represents about forty-four percent of that eight thousand units.
And you separate multifamily by condominium and apartment?
Multifamily is two or more units.
Whether it's a duplex, or whether it's, whether it's a condominium project?
Well, if it's a condominium project and it's ownership, then that doesn't come under the heading from the U.S. Census Bureau. If it is owned, privately owned, no.
Even though those units can be, can also show up as a rental?
That's true. With the, with the, with the U.S. Census Bureau, they look at, when they provide their census, do you rent here or do you own? It's as simple as that. And those residents that are living there, they're, they're checking the box that whether they rent or whether they own. Um, so these numbers are reflective of that simple question.
So it is feasible that someone renting a condominium would show up as a rental?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, absolutely, yes, mm-hmm. And therefore would come under the jurisdiction of this type of a program, which would allow them to be inspected.
What's the, um, traditional reaction to, um, this kind of service from hotels and motels?
It depends on whether or not you include them in the ordinance. I've got communities that do include hotels and motels, and I've got to include-
I only ask 'cause it's on your ordinance.
That, that's true.
It's a model ordinance, might be modified.
Exactly. You, some communities take it out, some leave it in. It, it depends on whatever the circumstances are within your community, because local government has the authority to adopt this type of a measure, and it's up to you based on what you feel is needed here. In some communities, they don't really have any hotels and motels, it's, you know, they may have industry and that, but not hotels and motels, so they take it out, so.
I'm just trying to figure out what line does the government draw that says, these are the properties we're going to inspect, and these are the ones we're not?
Well, this is only relative to rentals.
Understood, but-
Yeah, yeah.
But in all of that category of rentals, of which you list, and we have our own, obviously, inventory list, which ones do you say you will in fact inspect and get the certificate that you recommend?
Residential.
We have a number of companies in town that rent homes to our visitors. They come down and spend either six months here, or a month, or extended stay. I mean, is it the intent, is that where the issue lies? What generates the interest in this in the first place? Is there a, a concern about certain housing stock that isn't being maintained properly? And is this, is this a broad scope, or is it more focused? Turn to Mr. Oden, 'cause you brought this to the council.
Yes, a while back, we had a number of residents who came to us, asking us for assistance because of the dilapidated conditions of their residence, their apartment dwellings. And we were pretty much, well, we, we really couldn't assist them with those specific issues. And shortly thereafter, I met Mr. Jordan, and I said, well, here's an option that we can look at that addresses both. But in addition, following that, as we began to have developmental issues within the community, there was a lot of opposition to apartment dwellings, because people's number one concern was that, you know, these apartments will, you know, they'll just turn into little slums. Here's a way that we can have somewhat of a guarantee to our community that if we build a dwelling that is multifamily, that we will address those concerns. So that's what prompted, and this is the issue that I've said, you know, that, over and over again, yes.
You know, I'm not sure whether or not this is an issue here, but one of the things these type programs can address is- these type programs can address is safety hazards, and that is fire-related safety hazards. It will definitely reduce fire runs, because when you go into these properties, you're checking for smoke detectors, you're checking for hazards such as improper flammable stored and improper locations and that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
In your experience over this, and you've been doing this for a few years.
Yep.
And I'm sure you've met resistance towards this from...
The landlord community.
Rental property owners.
Yeah, I'm sure they've got a poster of me in some of their places, that's for sure.
What, if you were to, and I'm just, I'm not going to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm going to guess, that for someone who keeps up their property, they don't have any problem.
You're exactly right.
And for somebody who doesn't, they have all kinds of problems.
Oh, absolutely. Because they know that, they don't have too much of a problem with the fee structure, because it's very reasonable, considering it's over a two-year period. But, they know if you allow them to get through the doors and you see what the issues are, that it may cost them some money in having to bring those properties up to acceptable standards of habitation and living. Now, with the residents that are there, those citizens, even though they're renters, programs like this take that responsibility out of their hands, because a lot of those renters have issues and have problems with complaining. Because they know that, okay, this guy's going to jack up my rent or he's going to try and evict me because I'm a complainer. When you take them out of the loop and now they're not the bad guy, one of the things we find, as soon as this program gets adopted, our phones start ringing off the hook, because those tenants want to know, when are you going to come to my place? When are you going to get to my apartment? And they are there on the days that we come and do the inspection, because they want to walk us around and show us where all the problems are. They exist. You know, the landlord's going to tell you, oh, no, everything's fine. But, no, the tenants, well, you just said you've had tenants that came to complain and I can assure you that they do exist.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? It's the council's pleasure on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Well, my goal was simply to provide the council and the city with some options of addressing some of the concerns that have come before us. And certainly, you know, whatever way the council would like to go, I think it presents to us, you know, an option of addressing some of the issues not only that we have currently, but perhaps some issues that face us for the future. So, whatever direction the council would like to take is...
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Reller Spurgeon.
You said that you had given costs to Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Obviously, I haven't seen this or been able to read it until you gave it to me tonight. Nor have I seen the costs. And I'd like to be able to have the whole picture before I can say where I want to go.
Yes, if I could comment, the reason I had not supplied the costs was because I was waiting to see if council had some direction before we put a lot of staff time into analyzing that. But, what I can say is, the cost, it's basically a break-even plan. In theory, the homeowner pays for the inspections and there would be a small administrative fee that ultimately would come back to the city, however, that would generate additional inspections for us, so that administrative fee would be eaten up. So, just suffice it to say that it would be a, almost a break-even. So, if council would want us to put the staff time in to explore further, I would refine and get specific numbers and costs and bring them back to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I would be interested in seeing a little more information on it, not knowing exactly where to go on this. But, I think the building department would probably have some input into what we're looking at here. And just a quick question, if you have a rental property, are you required to have a business license in the city? You are. Okay.
Brought up a good point, because one of our cities, East Point, Georgia, compliance with the rental program is also tied to the business license. They cannot get a business license unless they comply with the rental program. And that's one way they ensure that landlords comply.
But, it's, I think there's, I think there's some merit to reviewing this, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? What I can do is, then I will ask those affected departments to draft the memo that we had talked about and get into the weekly reports. And if council would like, we could revisit this issue at your convenience.
I'd like to see the validity for the program itself, how we determine who is inspected and who is not inspected, regards to hotels and single-family. I mean, what lines do you recommend we draw? And then, who does the inspections? I mean, is it done by a contract? Is it done by a bid to establish that contract? Is it brought in-house? Those kinds of options?
It's actually done by City Works and you may want to touch on that.
Well, the proposal is City Works, but I'm suggesting to you that I want to see, is it City Works or is it, are there other companies that do this? Is it someone you can hire? Is it a competitive bid? Is it done in-house? You know, I'm embracing the concept of the inspections. I've got some questions still out there, but, you know, it's not as though, looks good, let's sign a contract. The investigation, I think, requires continual scrutiny. How exactly do we implement this? And then, is there a trial period or not a trial period or, just some questions. And I think we should probably talk to some people in the community. And not just show up one day knocking on the door. We should have some sort of inner, some dialogue.
As you will have some comments from your landlord department associations, I would also suggest that you talk to homeowner associations and neighborhood associations, because they're the ones that support this type of program wholeheartedly.
And I think when staff is doing the review too, if they could include what they, meaning staff, sees as advantages and perhaps disadvantages as well, so I'd be very interested in that.
Good. Okay. Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
All right, let's turn now to our second item, which is Development Task Force Report, and I guess subtitle, Design Review Process. So, who carries the charge here? Mr. Stiles here, is Mr. McCullough here?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could ask Mr. McCullough and Mr. Stiles to come to the podium. Mr. McCullough was the chairman of the task force. And if I may start with a brief note. If I may start with a brief message to council. Many months ago now, we had started a process which was designed to make our whole development process more business-friendly. This is, this is a journey we had started actually a couple of years ago. And this was the attempt to actually make a final stab, if you will, at really making our whole process business-friendly. And after several months of working with this entire group, and I believe a little later on, the chairman will introduce all the members of the task force. We've met every Monday and there's a subcommittee of the city council, Mr. Mills and Ms. Reller Spurgeon. We have all gotten to be know each other rather well. Every Monday for probably the last, what, three months, four months, five months? Four months. We all got together and we went through these issues, each issue over and over again, which will result tonight in the report that the committee will present. So, Mr. Mayor, it's with that that I give the microphone over to present you with Mr. McCullough, who is the chairman, and let you know that we've put a lot of effort into this and we take great pride in the recommendations that they have this evening. Michael, thank you.
I'm really going to step in here.
You're going to start? Okay, John, thank you.
I'm going to start. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think the city manager's pretty well given my presentation on this. And this is the recommendations of the Development Task Force. Michael McCullough has been the chairman. I would tell you that when we started this back in October, I said to Michael, two months in and out, overdone quick, before tax time. He hasn't talked to me since, because we're just finishing it up, but I think it's just part of the process that works so very well. City council members, Chris Mills and Jeanie Reller Spurgeon, and the city manager's office, David Reddy and Troy Butzlo, and from the Agua Caliente Tribal Planning Office, Tom Davis. There were fifteen members. I'm not going to introduce them now. Michael will do that a little bit later. But, this whole process came out of the, our recommendations back in the fall. And our purpose was to improve the business-friendly image of Palm Springs by providing concrete, specific, positive recommendations on how to improve the development-related process at City Hall. And I think our participants are really representative of the community. There are a variety of local stakeholders, contractors, architects, engineers, local citizens, chamber of commerce, planning commission, city council, staff, and the Agua Caliente band of Kowee Indians. And it was, it was a good group, it was open, and most importantly, I think they were committed to the process. Over what really has turned out to be a six-month period in communication with the department heads, with staff, we have formed these recommendations. And with that introduction, I'm going to step aside and turn the program over to Michael and some of the task force. Thank you.
Thank you, John. He's right. The dedication of the task force was really why this thing went longer. It was originally conceived that it was going to be relatively short and, I don't want to say superficial, but it was not, we weren't going to go into the kind of depth that we wanted to. But, we started with one-hour meetings, ended up with two-hour meetings. And it was the members of the task force that drove the complexity and the thoroughness of the process. So, that's, I just decided I was going to stick there. If they could go to those meetings and sit through that, so could I. So, that's one of the reasons why we had this elongated timeframe. We recognized early on that we had this challenge. And as you listen to some of our recommendations, one of the things we wanted to do was push decision-making down to the front counter and try to get the people to be able to make decisions whenever you go in and deal with the people to counter. And that's a good thing. But, one of the things that we recognized that could be a problem with that is we wanted consistency. People want consistency. And how can you have consistency if you have people who aren't that experienced and aren't that trained, making decisions? And so, that's an area that we wanted to bring to light to you, that it is a possible tension in, that we were not able to completely resolve, but we recognize that it does exist. We also wanted to make it clear that this is not the end of the process. This is the end of this task force as a symbol. But, we want to have follow-up and we want to have review. We felt that it was critical for that. And the Palm Springs Economic Development Corporation, a lot of people who are on the task force, we have professionals that are in the industries and they have volunteered to participate. So, obviously, the council is going to get some broad recommendations. And when it comes time for you to make specific decisions, we're there to help. And we're there to handle that subcommittee or that task force for you as needed. We had a, the goal, and some of these things I hate to have to read to you, but you've probably served in many groups and you end up with group write, whenever you write things. So, it's not like we would normally discuss something. It's kind of how the language ended up. It was massaged a bit. And so, I think our prevailing goal was, we wanted to create a mandate for excellence in customer service through an efficient process with an eye toward ever-improving local economy. That's one of the things that PSEDC wants to do, is, yeah, I talk like that at home. The PSEDC is very interested in improving the local economy. And so, the format of tonight's presentation is that we're going to be having five sections. And I'm going to start with global recommendations, because a lot of the recommendations that we make apply to all of the departments. So, we're going to kind of get those out of the way. And you'll see on the slides, it's going to come up and they'll say, see global, see global. And that's what we're talking about. They've already covered that. And with each department, they'll get into some specifics. Well, we're going to talk about the engineering department, the building department, the planning department, and then later I'll finish up with a conclusion. Whenever we were developing this dialogue, we realized that we kind of came up with some terms, we sort of manufactured them, and we want to make sure that we kind of explain those to you and give you the definition of the concepts that we're talking about. We talk about decentralized decision-making. And that really, in the context of this group, we meant maximizing the number and type of approvals granted over the counter, empowering the staff to make decisions, authorizing more staff-level decisions while maintaining consistency and standards. And that reflects back up to our underlying challenge that I discussed earlier, that that's a tough thing to do. And that's going to be up to the manager of the departments. Matrix, you're going to hear matrix discussed. The matrix concept is a tracking system for every project that comes into the city, so that the applicants can get an idea when working with the staff as to how this process, how this program, how their project is going to be tracked through the system. Hopefully, they're going to know that there's someone in staff who's going to, has some ownership on this project. They're going to get an idea as to, now they've submitted their complete application, how long is it going to take to follow up before they hear back? And maybe how long it's going to take for the entire process to reach fruition if everything goes according to plan? Because a lot of times, it gets back to the applicant and they have delays. But, based on, you know, the preferred scenario of everybody does everything right, what's the timeframe going to be on this? And we think there's benefits to the applicants and it'll also benefit staff and management. So, you'll hear the matrix. And we'll get into more details on the matrix later as to how we think it possibly can work. Triage, what we wanted to do is, once again, when a project comes in to the counter for the first time, that the counter, the person at the counter can make a differentiation between the submitted applications and kind of figure out what track they're going to be on and where they should go. So, when you hear triage, that's what we're talking about there. I'm on to global recommendations, so I'm going to talk about some of the things that will apply to all of the different departments. First of all, we wanted to recognize that there, the task force wanted to recognize, when I say we, I mean the entire task force, that the, there's a lot of things that are working that we think are successful and we want to continue. We wanted to recognize that that is the case. The dogs group, the Development Opportunity Group sessions, we think are great and we think those should continue. Also, the Development Review Committee, the pre-application process, and also the Officer, Office of Neighborhood Involvement and Public Participation. We would like to see those things continue on as they are. One of the things that we wanted to see, a lot of, some of the people in the task force are outside of government and are really outside, myself included, are outside of the process of government. And so, we saw that there might be some improvements that would be based a little bit more on the model that we have in private industry. And one of the things that we really weren't getting a clear answer on were performance evaluations. We wanted to see that for all staff managers and processes, we wanted to make sure that there was, there were tools for coaching and monitoring progress. And that we thought that customer service, customer surveys for feedback would be important. We want to create a survey system to monitor customer experiences across a range of permitting other processes, to get the feedback from the customer. That'll give us an idea of how we're doing and then we can somehow measure that and benchmark it and say, and see how we're doing six months later. Have clear annual goals for each person in each process. We want to be able, we want to have the people that are working in City Hall get, provide coaching for them and the resources that they need to achieve their goals and make managers accountable for staff performance. And a lot of this does happen, but we thought there could be some improvement there. We want to provide incentives and recognition for the best performances. We want to see creative ideas from staff that will work within our budget constraints. We recognize that we're in a situation right now, as a matter of fact, I'm serving on just starting up another budget task force. And so, we have been cognizant that we have severe financial restraints when we make recommendations. We haven't let that completely bind our hands, because we think that there's certain things that probably need to be done. They may not be able to be done this year or maybe not even the next year, but this is where we really think we want to be. This is where we want to be. And it may not happen tomorrow and we may not have the resources to make it happen tomorrow, but hopefully, it will happen. And we will, when we talk about certain things, at the end in the conclusion, I'll mention a couple of things that we recognize that this might maybe a cost factor. We want to, we think that decentralizing decision-making is important. We've heard a lot of feedback, especially from some of our surveys that we sent out early in the process, that they weren't getting enough counter-level approvals and they also would like to see in-house plan checks instead of having the plan checks sent out. We thought it would be important that staff's empowered, that they're trained and they're coached on the job and have experts in different fields and have them cross-trained across specialties. So, if someone's on vacation, the project doesn't stop there until they get back, there'd be cross-training. And also establishing staff ownership of each customer contact. We think it's important. We see this in some of the, if you ever do studies of customer satisfaction and you look at some of the leaders in that, the Ritz-Carlton Hotel is an example of that. If you make a complaint to somebody, doesn't matter where they are in the hotel, that person owns that complaint and they see that that customer is satisfied. And so, we want to see that that kind of customer service can be brought to the customers that come to the city of Palm Springs. And we want, we think the major decisions and management issues should be reserved for the managers, but let the staff make the minor decisions. The next thing I have is triage applications to determine the... The next, the next thing I have is triage applications to determine the processing path. We touched on that definition a little bit. They want, we want to make sure that we determine the completeness prior to the acceptance of the submittal. So a lot of times, things are submitted and they're not complete and that causes a hangup. So we want to make sure that right at the beginning, we say, "No, this is not complete. This is not complete." And then come in, come to us complete. Now you're into the matrix. Now you're into the system. Now we can give you a timeline. We thought it was, it was important, we're looking at the things that come, come to the counter and maybe differentiate when you triage based on complexity of the project, the size of the project, and the type of the project. And to create timelines for each of these different types of projects so that we'd have a benchmark in it, in which to give the applicant and also for, to see how we're doing to measure against that. We would like to see that the, that we can simplify and modern, modernize at ever, every opportunity. We envision creating customer-friendly checklists and timelines and review existing materials and improve those as needed. This is, this is not really formally in my part of the recommendations, but this, this was an important distinction that we made when we were studying things, is that the, the people who are the professionals who do business and the larger contractors and do regularly do business with the city of Palm Springs, they really know how the system works. And they, they have been, their feedback is very positive. The feedback we got is Palm Springs is good. You should see, and I'm not going to name any other cities or the county, I will name the county. But the, the feedback from them is, is all positive. They're, the, that Palm Springs is doing very well. But it's more, it's more of the smaller contractor or maybe even the homeowner who walks in and wants to get their fence done or their pool done or their driveway redone. And they're the ones that had more complaints. They kind of got lost in the system. So that, so that's one of the things that we wanted to do was when we talk about this triaging and such, was to make sure that we can help those people who are not that familiar and some of these handout-type things and checklists are deemed to help them get started right at the beginning. When they go into City Hall, their step one, here it is, and let's get you started on the right track. Because they need to be educated too as to what is expected of them. Because a lot of times, they have unreasonable expectations because they're just not familiar with the, the system. And finally, create the dynamic project matrix. We think that we can improve the technology and communication. We looked at some other, some people on the task force brought in some experience from other cities. And there are some very sophisticated and efficient tracking software. And I know that the, the city has studied some of the internet, internet-based, web-based, e-government type of, of software programs. And we think that that would be very efficient because some type of system like that will be able to put, when we, when we talk about putting these projects into the matrix and tracking them, it would be on the internet and would allow access for everybody. So you would get a number for your project and you could go to the internet and see where is it. You could find out where in this, in this timeline that you were given when you first brought your project in, where is it and is it stuck or whatever? So you wouldn't have to come down to City Hall to check on your progress. You'd know right away with this. And that, that would be something that would be integrated into probably a bigger city-wide movement in technology or could even be separate depending on what your, what your desires are and of course, financial constraints. Okay. We want to make sure that there's a focus on customer service. We had a lot of complaints that the phone doesn't get answered, something as simple as that. Whenever you call my office in my business, the, the rule is two rings and it gets picked up. And it gets picked up by, you know, I, I pick the phone up, everybody answers the phone. Just, it just, we just, it doesn't ring, doesn't go to voicemail, doesn't go to electronic, whatever. It gets answered by a human being. And so that, that was one of the things. I mean, we had people send back their questionnaires, bold letters, "Answer the phone." Like every department, what's wrong? Answer the phone. So we, we put it in. And also regular customer service training for people that work at the counter in the departments. Just general customer service training should be part of their regular education and continuing education. Also, we thought it was important, and I think this is already on the table, to create a task force to review zoning and land use regulations and ordinances. There are some areas that we, that we think that there's some problems that has to do with relevance, consistency, clear, clarity, and currency, not money currency, but being, are they, are these up to date? So we'd like to see a task force created to review that and update that. And also to create a quarterly developers' roundtable that would include staff and representatives from the development community and interested residents to have a, a feedback on how we're doing in the development process. So that takes care of the global recommendations and those, these will apply, the task force decided, to all different departments. At this point, I'd like to bring up John Sanborn, who's going to cover the engineering department. Time out?
Yeah.
After a quick break?
Yeah. We'll come back.
Take a quick recess. We'll take a ten-minute break.
Good.
Call the meeting back to order. We'll turn back to our item discussing the Development Task Force report. And I think engineering is our next order.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the decentralization of the decision-making in the engineering department, we'd like to see more of that. I realize that's going to be a little on the difficult side because engineering really is a very technical thing and there's few people that can improve things. However, I think there are some items that could be decentralized and pushed on down. We need to review the requirements and conditions. I think the boilerplate needs to be removed from the items that it's not applicable to. There should be a clear, concise set of conditions applicable to the project that's being reviewed and not a bunch of other items. And that should go for planning's conditions requirements also. Realign the conditions to meet the scope of the project. Again, back to the same item. Fortunately, engineering doesn't have a whole lot because it's working fairly well. I hate to say that to Dave. Again, back to triage. I think that's very important so that the developer and the design consultant knows where the project is at all times. I like the idea of a web access availability so it can be almost instantaneous. Improve communications among the various departments, planning, engineering, and the building department. It has improved somewhat, however, from time to time, it does fall through the cracks. I had an item this week that that happened between engineering and building. Building did not pick up items sent over by engineering and the project was held up for two or three days until we got it cleared up. And that's basically what I have as far as the engineering. I think since we have started this process, I have seen things change over there. They have taken heed to some of the things we have discussed. We've been getting conditions faxed to us and I think if nothing more, that's helped a heck of a lot. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, John.
We have the rotating chair here and I think it's important that when you get to your questions and, so if you have engineering department questions, John Sanborn will be available. And we also have other task force members. So we'll leave this chair open when we get to the questions and I'm hoping for volunteers to come up and bail me out whenever you ask something very difficult. So right now, Bill Davis, who I think attended just about every meeting with me, is going to talk about the building department.
Good evening. Starting off with the decentralization again, we're just very much aware, and in building department as well as the other departments, that empowering the staff has a tremendous residual value for training and purposes and so forth. Review requirements and conditions. Staff needs to be trained such that they have the ability to distinguish between state and federal mandates and those which are local policies. And this will generate more flexibility in the application process. Creation and use of standardized correction lists. This would definitely verify completeness and compliance of applications. It would accelerate the, thank you, accelerate the permitting process and ensure consistency. These, these correction lists are available through larger jurisdictions that already had them in place. So it's, they're basically a phone call away. Improve code enforcement. Here we feel that staff training is necessary. Here we feel that staff training is necessary. Life safety must be recognized as the department's primary responsibility. And focus on the intent of the code is what will really help staff to be effective in their communication with the public at the public counter. Consistency is, we feel, a byproduct and is directly proportional to the actual code knowledge of the individuals serving in the building department. Down to triage, I think we've already gone over that. Gone over that well enough. This will, of course, provide applicants with a timeframe for their project review. It will simplify the internal processing of applications. And again, it accelerates the permitting process when coupled with a well-conceived matrix and supporting software. Improve access, communication, and technology. Our recommendations here include use of the matrix and supportive software. Expansion of department office hours. We've, the group essentially settled on 7:00 a.m. till 4:30 or 5:00 p.m. This can be dealt with through flex time and 9:80 pay periods. Number three, provide cell phones for the field staff. This will reduce a great deal of tension at the job sites when inspectors are delayed on other inspections. Being able to contact the construction personnel and let them know that they will be delayed will really generate a better feeling amongst the construction industry. And finally, as it's written, dedicate a specific timeframe for plan check availability. I think we used the word counter time. I don't know that it's necessary that the plan check staff meet people at the counter, but I think it's very important that the design community is aware of the fact that there are specific times that the plan check staff will be available to them to answer any of their questions. This is a large one. Improve the plan check process. I think that both Mr. Kaplan, the city hired consultant, and our task force felt very strongly that in-house plan review is something that we would really like to see considered by council. We feel that it would increase, of course, the availability of the staff to the design community. It increases the potential for over-the-counter approvals. Certainly, it will enhance the cross-training process. Again, it will accelerate the permitting process. And the good news in terms of the mention of the budget situation, it will generate sufficient revenue to exceed any additional staffing costs. We recommend that staff review and simplify the plan check requirements for single-family residences and for tenant improvements. This will allow a greater focus on life safety issues. It will minimize redundancy with field inspection issues and, again, accelerate the plan review process and the permitting process. And finally, relative to this plan check process, as already been mentioned, we would like to make certain that submittals are reviewed for completeness prior to their entering into the system. Personally, I've seen where this has not been done effectively and there can be generated misunderstandings by people who have submitted something into the process and find out that in fact it's inappropriate or, and then, of course, the staff feels a certain liability there and it becomes an issue. So, and finally...
Did you discuss the pre-screening for the fire?
Oh, well, I didn't really discuss that, but the, there's a certain degree of complexity regarding the current fire plan check process. I don't know if I, I might need some help here from someone in the...
Can I help you, Bill?
David, would you please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. In the pre-screening, we thought we could simplify that process. We could simplify it in essence. Actually, the other plan checkers can do some of the minor pre-screening for fire and some of the other more complicated would be sent out for the fire plan checking. But in any case, it would streamline the system so that would reduce a step in the process.
Thank you, David. And finally, we took a sharp look at...
Oh, and Bill, sorry to interrupt, but I would need to add the caveat that the actual fire inspection that would have to be done in the field would still be done by our fire inspectors, our fire department, and that part of the process would not change.
Thank you. The final recommendation that we have for council relative to the building department is a careful review of the current fee schedule. I'm not so much certain that it's a matter of the fee schedule itself, but instead the application of the fee schedule. We've, through report by the department management, that the method of valuation of projects is somewhat questionable. And from my experience, 15 years as a building official, what I see, the manner in which it's carried out here represents a substantial loss in city revenue. I believe that by comparing outside jurisdictional approach to the valuation process and revision of the current process is very needed at this point. The good news again is that with a revision of this feeing process and in-house plan checking, they will offset, easily offset, the proposed technological and staffing costs that we're recommending.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we're going to move on to the planning department. And Margot Tebow is here. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you may take me off. I still can see. Mayor, members of the council.
Hello, Margot.
Hello, Mayor. How are you?
I'm great. I'm just great. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
What's your department here? You gonna do planning again?
I'm going to do planning again. As you can imagine, this was probably one of the most often discussed department through the six months. A lot of the things that Mike and the two individuals that spoke before me, the things that they raised regarding decentralized decision-making, empowering the staff, all of those things apply to the planning department as well. Empowering the staff is something that's extremely important. The people at the counter, at the front line, excuse me, need to be trained. They need to understand the codes. They need to feel comfortable in making decisions and helping people through the process. Some of the feedback that we got from the surveys was, it was somewhat heavy-handed maybe, too regulatory, and they weren't felt that they were being helped through the process. So that was one of the more stronger suggestions that came out of the task force. Again, the triage application, and I think Mike touched on this. There is a marked difference between people that use the system, people such as myself and other engineers, that do it on a regular basis, that are professionals. We know our way around City Hall. We know what questions to ask. The homeowner that just moved here that wants to put up a fence doesn't know the regulations. They don't know who to ask. And empowering the staff to help these people through the process, we thought was extremely important. Simplify and modernize at every opportunity. Again, trying to give your staff the most up-to-date technology and tools helps them to do a better job, helps them to provide better customer service. We talked about some of the outreach opportunities. We have a wealth of talent in this community. We talked about an ombudsman program. We talked about having someone that could, if someone comes in like a homeowner, someone that's not real familiar with the process, that they could get a referral, somebody that they could contact that could help them through the process. I'm not necessarily a hired gun or a professional, but, you know, something along that line. Am I off the...
You're doing fine, Margot. Don't worry.
Sorry.
They're just checking scores, I think. I don't know what they're doing here.
Is that what they're doing?
Yeah, I don't know. Don't worry about it.
One of the issues that we discussed was revision and formalization to the design review process. That's something that the council's been discussing independently and I believe are going to be discussing after you hear the recommendations of the task force. Currently, the design review is a rather informal board. There are sometimes problems with quorums. And then having the decisions of the design review board then be re-examined or altered or modified by the planning commission. So there were suggestions in terms of formalizing the design review process. And I, like John, would like to say that there have been improvements since the task force has been meeting. The department heads, you know, Doug Evans has been at some of our meetings, has heard our concerns, and we believe some of the things have been implemented. There have been more approvals at the counter. Someone is answering the phone. It's very rare that you get voicemail, so it's a positive impact just from our discussions alone.
Thank you, Margot.
Thank you. My conclusions, I'll be very brief because it's really kind of just going to talk once again about this. So we have decentralized decision-making, improve internal communication and department coordination, and focus on performance. And one of, I just touched on this earlier. We recognize that these types of recommendations, some of them are going to require, all of them are going to require time and effort by the staff and support from the city council, but some of these will also have an impact on the budget. And we think it's, and we recognize that these items are, when we talked about creating the position of a planning manager, that that would probably be a new position, or we hopefully talked about having someone come up in the organization, but that would leave a void. That might be an additional personnel cost. To take over the day-to-day development services responsibilities and facilitate a separation of strategic planning responsibilities. Hire a plan checker in-house. Maximize the in-house plan checks and address difficulties caused by the heavy workload as well as recommendation to pre-screen the fire plan check at the counter. And also improve the technology. We talked about that in the matrix. Now, one of the things that we wanted to squeeze in here was the, Mr. Reddy was going to talk about the functional organization chart. Are you prepared for that, Mr. Reddy? You don't have the chart.
The discussion was centered around, as we talked about before, in the triage differentiating the large and the small projects. As part of that process, we would separate strategic planning, which is the longer, the bigger issues of the city, from the current planning. And to accomplish that, obviously, one of the things that we would have to do is, in theory, to separate those two functions. Obviously, they would still be tied together, however, they would also have the separate paths in, again, the strategic planning, the long-term, and the current planning. So under that scenario, the larger projects that have different needs from the smaller projects, as we've heard in part of the presentation, we could address the developer a little differently than we could the citizen just wanting a small tenant improvement. But more globally, in terms of that, what you see in the overall org chart here is that development services as a whole would come under the assistant city manager. And the assistant city manager and I would work closely in this whole process and development services, including public works and engineering, strategic planning, current planning, community development, and building. Under that scenario, our roles would be to coordinate all of those functions. And by coordinating all those functions, we can make sure that all the projects going through are coordinated. The left hand will know what the right hand is doing and we will make sure that things are done timely and it's more business-friendly, customer-friendly. The training is where it needs to be and we'll be able to shepherd the projects through. And with that is the basic organizational change that the committee has recommended. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our formal presentation and we're ready for questions. And this chair is open for the task force members to come up and specifically address areas that are within their area expertise.
Okay. Council, let's go through your questions. Mr. Oden.
On the functional organizational chart, this is just conceptual at this time, correct?
Yes, it is conceptual at this time. It was an idea that was put forth during our discussions and it was the plan that the task force adopted. But again, it is conceptual because obviously, although some of it obviously is ministerial in moving of the positions, some of it obviously would require actual council positions and additions of positions and changes of positions, which obviously would be done during the budget process and require council approval. And certainly, those would be debated at that time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I know that there are members of the committee who are here and I don't know if they'd like to make any comments or not.
Or at least be...
At least the introductions.
We had the committee members. We've already seen John Sanborn. Mike Fontana is here. John Schoenberger is not here. He's also on the planning commission. Peter Dixon. And we saw from Bill Davis that Frank Winsell is here. Steve Nichols is here. And John Pomeroy was here. I don't know if he, I don't have eyes in the back of my head. John Morris, Margot, Tebow. Denise Schoolby is not here tonight. Dave Johnston. Brian Strahl's here. Philip Formator and Lance O'Donnell. And I would like to personally thank everybody who participated. It was a great group and we really did have all the bases covered. A lot of people from different aspects would bring a lot to the table. And it was a privilege to serve as the task force chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I'd like to applaud all of those who participated. Thank them. And because you've done an excellent job, absolutely excellent. And I don't know if any of your committee members would like to say something.
The green light's on. It's all good to go, John.
Mr. Mayor, council members, John Pomeroy. Been a member of this task force. It's been a pleasure. We've worked very, very hard on this whole process. One of the reasons that we came together, as far as I know, is that we were having some problems with the departments. And we wanted to come up with recommendations to try to eliminate some of those problems, make things better for the public, for the city to serve the public. And I think we've come up with those recommendations. I would like to point out a couple of things. I don't feel as though we should let this thing sit on the back burner. There are certain things that can be done here. Certainly, we have budget issues within the city, but there are certain things that can be done over time to make things work better. Not only for the public, but also for the folks who are out there working for the city. And I think that's important to make a note of that. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this.
Very good. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mills.
Nice call. The, I certainly echo what was just mentioned by John. And, you know, we looked at something that was going to be a few meetings and ended up being a lot of meetings. And I certainly wish to thank EDC as well for their role and certainly Mike and all the other members of the task force. And I think it's important that, and David, certainly however you want to handle it... And I think it's important that, and David, certainly however you want to handle it is ultimately your call, right? But there's some important information in here that I think needs to be reviewed and evaluated by your department head. Some of it affects budget, and I know you have some numbers on some of these items in here that we've talked about. But I think when we're getting ready to do the budget review here soon, that it would be beneficial to have your departments look at it, including, and see what the impact is to what we're looking at here. Some of it is budget-related, some of it is not. So, we, at least I would appreciate that, I'm sure Jeannie would as well. Ron, who knows about him?
Let me comment off of that. Budget-wise, page four, under your last slide indicates, "Create dynamic project matrix. Acquire sophisticated tracking software." Price tag?
Mr. Mayor, if I could address that.
Hundred and fifty?
That's, we could run anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five, potentially up to $200,000 with maintenance. But what I would note is, even though that may be shocking to the sensibilities at first blush, I think that may be one of the most single important things that we could do here, because what that would say to everyone that deals with our whole system in terms of development is, they could go online potentially to get a permit, find out where their project is, is in the process, and they could do so many things that would make their lives easier, not only their lives, but our lives internally on staff to help us serve them better. And I think that may very well be one of the things that could pay for itself by the small kinds of fees that we can charge for that specific purpose. So we will be bringing that forward to you very, very, very soon in the budget process. I would also note that that will drive the matrix. That may very well drive the matrix. So when someone comes in and offers or gives their application, through that web-based process, we may be able to, hopefully, the idea is, to hand them a piece of paper, in essence, we'll give them the full schedule of their project. And they'll know exactly what their responsibility is, they will know what our responsibility is, and they will know the times and the dates. And if we don't meet them, then there's a process, you know, we are held accountable for it. And if they don't meet the dates, then we hold them accountable for it. So, Dan, that's kind of a long answer to your question, but I think the whole committee felt that that was a very important and key concept, and that you will see that as a budget request.
I'll go on record initially by saying, the report is thorough, complete, and impressive. I've got some questions about how things work, and that's all they are, just questions for better understanding. Page four, second slide, decentralized decision-making, empower staff. Empower them to make decisions, is my assumption, allow them to make some decisions so the process is met, as you said repeatedly, it'll be counter, over-the-counter approvals. So then you turn over to page six, bottom slide, enforce rules with consistency. You talked about some of the facts that we have young inexperienced staff members who we now empower, who haven't got experience, so they're going to have some degree of inconsistency at first. Have you addressed how that happens? You talked about training and otherwise. Maybe you can give us some deliberation on how that's going to come about.
Whenever we discussed this, this exact question came up, and that was why we've, I think the first thing I talked about was that.
So do your challenge.
Right. And what, our answer to that was, this is not a snapshot in time, this is not, tomorrow this is not going to happen. This is where we want to go, and there's going to be a temporal component of this process. This is our goal, to be able to empower the staff to make good, consistent decisions. That's going to require some education, it's going to require some training. They actually laughed at me, I talked about the tour bus to take the new planners around and have Doug Evans say, "This is an example of what happened in Palm Springs 30 years ago, this happened 20 years ago, this doesn't fit, we don't like this anymore, and this is where we're going now, and this would fit in this neighborhood, and this wouldn't fit in that neighborhood." When I said it, everybody laughed, but then later they came back and said, "That's probably not a bad idea," as part of just letting the people at the counter get a feel for the experience vested in a few people in the city, and understand what the history is, and really what our vision for the city is, and what council's vision is, and what the planning commission's vision, that we're all on the same page. And hopefully, that, over a certain amount of time, if we implement those types of programs, we will be able to get these people up to speed, they start making decisions, they make some bad ones, they get feedback, they improve, they learn.
Page seven, first slide. Dedicated counter time for plan checkers. And then the second one, provide in-house plan checks. Are these same people plan-checking the in-house work? They're doing counter work? And then how are they doing both at the same time, or is it more staffing? Because if I'm a plan checker, and I'm trying to get my plan checks done, because you want them done in-house, but then you want me at the counter at the same time, then I can't be doing the plan check. So is it more staff to do the work? Or, explain that to me. Only from a budget standpoint, obviously, because I'm looking at a.
Mr. Mayor, what I think the feeling was, that set aside an hour or an hour or two a day, that a party could come in, if they've got a question on the plan check, they could ask the plan checker, or the plan checker could help some of the, particularly, we're talking about not architects who do here all the time, but with a guy that comes in and wants to add clothes in his garage, or do whatever. This would provide, the plan checker could say, "Look, you need to do this, you need to do that," to help these people out. I know they do it to some extent, but I think what they're saying is, set aside an hour a day, or an hour and a half, you know, from four to five.
Some portion a day, whatever it is.
Four to five, the plan checker is available to answer questions.
And then on the in-house plan checks, have you determined how large the project is that stays in-house, and when it triggers to out-house? When does it go to out-of-house service? That's stay on point here. What size does it stay in-house?
Mr. Mills, do you, I think you had a, you had a lot of comments on that. Mr. Mills and Ms. Reller Spurgeon attended our meetings and were very helpful, and so...
I had a huge impact.
Mr. Mills obviously has a lot of experience in both his profession and serving on the planning commission and council, so he was able to bring a lot to the table, and a lot of the stuff he can probably speak to best.
What we had hoped with that item, and certainly there is a cost impact, we were thinking in terms of a new plan checker with the capabilities of to be, being able to do structural ultimately, and so we would not really have to send anything out unless we were just backed up, or somewhere along that line. But the intent was to keep it in-house, to keep comments in-house. Those of us who use the plan check service at the city go out of our way to play the game to keep it in-house.
Sure.
Because it's an easier plan check. I mean, all of us do it. And there is a reason, because the satisfaction level is much higher in-house. But there are certain capabilities that we have in-house now that we, that, I mean, there's certain restrictions in-house that some types of work is just going to have to be sent out. And our goal is to ultimately get rid of that. There is a cost impact. As Mr. Davis did mention, though, on page seven, number seven, as we discussed in our task force meeting, is a very major item. I think the way we evaluate cost of projects at the city currently is way outdated as to what the current costs of construction are, and that there are means to update those costs to really fit what is current. Because your building department fees, your plan check fees, and your permit fees are based on evaluation, not actual cost, because the city doesn't monitor actual cost, it's evaluation. So whoever says this is a $200,000 project, usually the word of whoever the applicant is used versus having, and I'm not saying applicants are saying what's wrong, or trying to put forth something that isn't true, it's just that if there's a standard that meets the current industry, and those basic square footage costs for type of work are available, and they're available as streamlined as to your basic county or section of county, then I think we will be increasing fees. And for, well, based on the current system that we are using, it's not really changing the system, it's just upgrading the, upgrading the valuation.
So when we change the valuation of a project, and we don't allow the applicant to give a number without some review or scrutiny, we then generate a higher fee based on a higher value?
Maybe higher, maybe not.
And then do we generate higher TOT, property tax? How's the property tax established? I turned to finance, maybe for an answer on how property tax is established for additions or new builds or otherwise. Mr. Canar.
Mr. Mayor, yes, on property taxes, it has some connection, obviously, to the building cost, but the building valuation is in a direct reflection of the property assessed valuation that the county assessor puts on it. Generally, what happens, if it's a new construction, completely new construction, it's going to be the first sales price, is generally, it becomes the basis for that. That'll have some connection to the building cost, but it isn't specifically connected to it. On additions, that's closer, it's usually what the valuation is. I know because I put a room on my house a couple of years ago, and my property tax bill went up just about what it cost me to put the addition on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Tom, how would it be evaluated on a commercial project that's not for sale? So they don't have that item.
You mean like a refurbishing of an existing one?
No, I'm not talking single-family, I'm talking, yeah.
But is it new, or add-on, or refurbished?
A new commercial?
New?
Yeah, new.
And, but there's no sale involved, you mean, where the owner would retain ownership of it?
Right.
I'm speaking for the county tax assessor, and they have different criteria that they measure the value of a building by, not always just the sales price or the construction value, could be the business that's in there and how much money it generates. I guess my point is, is that's not necessarily connected to the building valuation.
Good, thank you, Tom.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I think that we have been dealing for quite a while with the perception of not being business-friendly, and that's one of the things that this task force has addressed. And I think we have an opportunity at this point to begin to address it. One of the things that you said in your underlying challenges, is what you faced. The conflict between simultaneously desires to establish consistency across the development permitting process on one hand, and to expect flexibility and individual treatment from staff on the other. We know that that's going to require some training. However, there are some things in here that won't cost us any money. So, I'm suggesting that those things that don't cost us any money, that we would review and return to us within 30 days of how we can implement those things that don't cost us any money. Now, we know we also have the overlay of another report that, from our consultant, that has come to us. Now, some of these things are very similar, and I know that he also met with the task force. And we've had consultants in before, and I think it's time for us to act on these recommendations. So, I'm going to recommend that those things that will cost, that will affect the budget, that we set up a priority basis. Those things that we think are absolutely essential, that we need to do, even though they cost us, but prioritize those things. And that we also, along with those other things that cost, look at how we implement the recommendations of Mr. Kaplan as well. And I think that that begins, for the first time, that we actually begin to address the perception of not being business-friendly. Because we've gathered together people from the community, a cross-section, they've made some recommendations to us, and what we have neglected to do in the past is to act. We've implemented things where we knew in-house, we said, "Well, we're doing some things." And maybe they were. And maybe they were even good things. But the community across the board, they were not impacted by those things, because they didn't really know what we were doing, even though they may have been good things. I think this gives us a key opportunity to say, "Yes, we asked for some things, the committee brought us back some things, and we're going to implement those things immediately."
Mr. Mills.
I'd just like to add on to Mr. Oden's comment, was that the task force did review Mr. Kaplan's report, and we agreed on some things, and we didn't agree on some other things. I think, and Michael, unless I'm wrong, I think we really took out of Mr. Kaplan's report and condensed it into our reports. I think, I mean, I think what his recommendations were, that the task force pretty much came to terms with and agreed with, are reflected in this document. It'd be difficult for staff to do both, is what I'm saying.
I see it a little differently. I think that some of the recommendations that, and certainly I do see some of them reflected here, and some within the organizational chart, et cetera. But as council members, we've had a longer opportunity to observe certain things and to see certain things, and we've not discussed that. We've not discussed that report as it came back to us. I think it's wonderful that the committee had, but we have not. So I think we, and we asked for it. So we need to sit down and discuss that information, and certainly there are some areas where I do see that. But I think we need to review it and evaluate and analyze it a little differently, and perhaps make some other recommendations, maybe not, but I think we at least need to analyze it.
Anything else?
Well, I have to agree with Ron that we need to do something. People have put a lot of time and effort into this, and to do that, not take advantage of the information that's been given to us would be crazy. And the other thing, I think it's important to acknowledge that this is here because Dana wanted it.
Yes.
Well, even though it wasn't what she wanted.
But she'll be happy.
It wasn't exactly what she wanted, but it does cover many of the things that she intended.
Yes.
Let me just say one word in conclusion.
In conclusion, sir.
Just, I thank you on behalf of EDC for allowing us to begin this process. And tonight really is not an end. I think it's more the beginning. We've laid it out, we need to follow up. I think you've heard that we've had buy-in by staff, things are already looking at it. I think that's a cooperative effort that works through, and I think a lot of that credit to keep it open goes to David and Troy through the process. It wasn't secret, it was open, and so people can deal with it. The other part of this is that while you talk about it, we're here to assist. We come back on a quarterly basis, we will talk about it, because I think the important thing is this does not disappear, that we have a chance to make some changes, to make a difference. I think things are happening here, we can make them happen in a better format, and that's what we're all concerned about. And with that, I would thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now?
Yeah.
Okay, now. In continuing our efforts to work with the EDC, it was a mutual decision that we should acknowledge the contributions of those members of the task force by providing each of them a certificate of appreciation. So I will read the first one, and then I'll simply call the names of the membership. Inasmuch as it's difficult to give these out in the table arrangement we have here, maybe what I'll do is I'll read them, and you can kind of come around and grab it for me, and then shake the hands of the council that you've supported and worked, okay? So our first one goes to, obviously, the chairman, Michael McCullough, for his dedication and service to the Development Task Force, 2002, 2003, dated today, signed by myself, the chairman himself, and the president of the EDC. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold your applause, it's a long list of people. John Sanborn, if you'll come forward and get your, actually, a very, very nice certificate, very custom-prepared just for you, sir. Steve Nichols, if you join us up here, people are running out, they don't want their certificates, I love this. Margot? Margot Tebow, please.
I was undergrad school.
In two more years, you're going to have a bigger certificate.
Good luck.
Brian Stroll? Is Brian here? Mike Fontana? Mike, are you with us? Thank you. Bill Davis? Michael, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor. It's John Pomeroy.
Bill, thank you.
Very much, I appreciate it. Getting there, John.
Thank you.
A lot of paperwork, a lot of paperwork. Thank you. Frank Wenzel. Frank, thank you for your service, sir. Peter Dixon? Peter's with us still? Yes, thank you, Peter. Frank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Formator? Phil's not here, is he? Thank you, Peter. Denise Schoolzbi, who I believe is also not here, John Schoenberger, not here. John Schoenberger, not here. John Morris? Very good, John, thank you for coming tonight. Dave Johnston? I don't think David's here tonight, I didn't see him in the audience. And Lance O'Donnell was here earlier but has left. Very good, thank you very much, sir. Now, Mr. Chairman? Where is that chairman? Maybe I'll give you these, is it better to give it to you?
I'll give them to John.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
There you go, we thought perhaps a little certificate?
I loved it.
It was fabulous idea. It's another EDC idea, they just, they won't stop creating new ideas for us. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you all very much for coming down on your presentations, and of course for your work. All right, our next order of business is the design review process. I think this is a component. And Mr. Ready, I think I'll turn this back over to you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a companion piece to the, uh, presentation that we just had. The design review has been in the works as well. Part of the genesis of this process has been to accomplish two things. One is to make sure that those things going to design review, in essence, do not get caught in some sort of continuum warp, time warp, if you will, where they bounce back and forth between design review and planning commission. Uh, that was one goal, and we believe that we have met that goal. So in essence, that, once it makes it through design review, in essence, the planning commission will, in theory, for the most part, accept the design review's decision, and they will move on. Uh, there are, um, the details of that will be explained to you in just a moment. The second issue and second goal, obviously, was one that there were some legal components to, uh, this process that, uh, the city attorney had, and those goals were met as well. So with that, members of council, I turn, they turn the presentation over to Doug Evans, our director of planning, and he will explain the details, and we recommend that you would adopt this as our new design review process. Thank you.
Uh, this is a, a status report. Uh, we've not gone to the extent of, of creating a new ordinance, although, uh, I've, I've written five drafts. And in nineteen, well, in 2001, I quit writing drafts because we kept getting input. And we're now looking at an outline and a process. Uh, we gave the council last week an outline and packet of information, and I'm gonna go really to what I think the, the most important portions of it. Uh, I want to start with what's next. Uh, if the council's comfortable with the direction of this outline, the next step is to get the planning commission up to speed. Uh, I need your direction as to whether or not you want the task force to look at it, because this comes under the domain of one of their recommendations. If we clear those two committees or groups, we'll then draft the ordinance, uh, go into the, uh, public hearing process and have a new ordinance for you. I can tell you that some of the items that are in this, we've already started, um, as far as our operational way of, of doing business. Uh, anytime you work with group decision-making, the philosophy of the group is every bit as important as the guidelines that are written. Uh, that comes from the design review group that we have today, uh, and the planning commission, and I think there's been some, some real focus on behalf of the planning commission to take a look at the buy-in to this process even before it's codified as an operational way of doing business. The, uh, exhibits that I put up on the board, and, uh, I did this, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, a typical design review meeting has exhibits on every wall in this room. The room is completely full of exhibits. We take every picture down, and we fill the room with exhibits. Architectural plans, site plans, landscape plans, lighting programs, sign programs, and the like. So it's a detailed and technical review, it's not one that's easily done by laypeople. Uh, you have to read plans fast, you have to absorb information, you have to look at things three dimensionally. And if it's not a technical group, uh, we're gonna bog down very quickly, or the process is going to become very, very superficial, and a pretty picture, uh, might fool a, a lay group of people. A pretty picture that doesn't have all the guts behind it will not fool a group of architects and landscape architects. And that's what our, our recommendation is, is a very technical, um, and professional design review group as opposed to what happens in some communities. I'd like to touch base just very quickly. Uh, Mr. Kaplan, in his report, uh, recommended a completely different process. Uh, he wanted to develop, uh, and recommended that we look at developing more detailed design guidelines, criteria, and then have one person, either a hired architect or a retired architect, somebody to review each project and write a report, that then the planning commission would review how that tests against, uh, the criteria and the policies. I'm gonna tell you that I've thought about how you would write design criteria for this town. Uh, I've talked to professionals about it. I don't think we'd ever finish.
No.
And when we got done, we would say it doesn't work. Because this town is eclectic. It's not a Santa Barbara. Guidelines in Santa Barbara are easy.
Yeah.
Guidelines, guidelines in Palm Desert might be easy. Guidelines in Palm Springs, very, very difficult. So, in meeting with the city manager, the city attorney, we've met with planning commission, we've met with design review group over the past couple of years, Councilman Mills has given us his guidance, we've come up with a program that we think fits Palm Springs and eliminates some of those concerns. So, can everybody see the exhibits over here?
Which ones?
From the front table? The, uh, the text. Because if you can't, I'm gonna work off of that, and I know the audience can't, but they have copies of what I'm gonna go over. This is the first memo. Very quickly, the intent of design review is really the legislative intent, and it's in the ordinance, and I'm not gonna repeat it. Basically talks about taking a look at the desert, Palm Springs, what's important to Palm Springs, design review adds to property values. Uh, bad, and, or bad design, poor design, bad site plans do not help property values. If you take a look at the intent in the current ordinance, uh, it really talks about building upon our community in a very positive way. What's subject to design review? In commercial zones, all buildings. It's real simple. All buildings are subject to, uh, design review. Industrial zones, all buildings. Single-family residential zones, only hillside, um, developments, and, uh, projects that are located on major thoroughfares, or if the planning commission or council required design review as part of a single-family subdivision. Uh, we don't review very much on flatlands. Most people have a misperception, probably eighty to ninety percent of the single-family development is not subject to design review in Palm Springs. You come to the building permit center, you comply with the codes, you get a building permit. We get some feedback that we should extend that, particularly when somebody goes out and, and paints yellow and orange in, in some of our single-family neighborhoods. Uh, they're not subject to design review. We don't look at colors, uh, in probably eighty to ninety percent of the instances. Multi-family residential, all multi-family residential is subject to design review. Condom, condominiums, apartments, uh, are subject to design review. When we take, took a look at the overall program, uh, what we started to look at was developing a planning commission subcommittee. At one point, we thought we'd have two planning commissioners. Planning commission feedback was, we're, we're already coming to at least three meetings a month. Uh, we can't add two more, you're gonna get one planning commissioner. So it's a subcommittee of the planning commission. We have a planning commissioner that sits as a liaison, and they can report to the planning commission what happened on each individual project. Doesn't have to be a staff report, it's a commissioner report if they need it. The, uh, next item is it's a technical advisory committee. Architects, landscape architects, design professionals, uh, one community member possibly, somebody that might have special expertise that doesn't fit that category, uh, and then one, uh, backup person that can fill in to make sure we always have a quorum, you know, our, our standby person to call. Ex-officio member, uh, historic site preservation board, have them look at the agendas, look at projects, look at issues, to make sure that one of our historic treasures, uh, doesn't slip through the process. Uh, we don't think that they should be a voting member, just as the planning commissioners are not a voting member, they're a liaison. Uh, they're an observer, they can participate in discussion, but they don't vote. The, uh, technical advisory, uh, committee members would be appointed by the planning commission. We had great debate. Currently, staff selects a group, uh, they report to me, uh, and we report their actions to the planning commission. In this case, since they're advisory to the planning commission on design review, it would be, uh, in this recommendation, the planning commission's responsibility to make the appointments to design review. The process, a technical advisory committee member would act as the chairperson. Right now, we work more in a consensus building group, uh, nobody really acts as chair, staff will act as a facilitator on some projects, a design review member might do it on others. We'd actually have a chair, they'd actually make a formal recommendation, and they'd actually vote. Um, you know, all architectural approval applications for new buildings and large additions would be submitted to the design review process or the subcommittee, uh, for their review. I've gotta tell you that we probably are gonna have to look at that, and if you want to empower staff, you're gonna have to take some of this away from design review and some of it away from the planning commission. Uh, and we're gonna probably have to do that just because of staffing levels and budget issues. So we're gonna have to keep looking at what is subject to design review, how extensive, what can we afford to really do. Architectural approval projects for by right of zone, that means you don't need a conditional use permit, you don't need a public hearing, uh, you're really only in for the design of the building and the site plan. Uh, those projects would go up to the planning commission, they would be non-public hearing items, they would be on the planning commission agenda, and they would be on a consent calendar. So that the planning commission on architectural approval items would have the majority of the items on a consent calendar. Most important part of the whole process?
Don't pull it.
This little bullet point?
Don't touch it.
Don't pull it. Somebody from the community has to raise an issue, the developer has to, has, have a question about the recommendation, about a condition of approval, or there's something community interest to pull it. We don't want to have it happen as the planning commissioners pull it to start talking about the design of the project. That would not be codified, the commission still has the ability to look at things and make decisions. I can tell you the planning commission is doing that right now, even though they don't use the consent calendar. They try very hard to not re-review. One of the things we did, perception. Uh, there's a perception that things go to design review, they go to the planning commission, they go from the commission, back to design review, back up and back and forth, and that goes on and on. We look at two years, uh, 2001, 2002. Uh, put the, the chart up for 2002.
We can pull that chart up.
Um, items that were restudied, which is the ones that go back to design review, in 2002, out of 131 items, three items went back to design review from the planning commission. If you took a look at denials, in that year, the commission denied two projects. In the previous year, there was a little bit more of the denial, and almost every one of them was land use driven, not designed.
Not designed, okay.
Yeah. So from the standpoint of, of operations, the commission is trying real hard, and they police themselves. If they start going down the design road, one of the members will remind the other member, "Wait a minute, this happened on Monday. Why are we looking at that again?" Talked about, you know, that, that projects can be reviewed by the planning commission, but the intent, again, is consent calendars. Projects that have a public hearing, uh, those would be reviewed by the planning commission. Those, because of public comment, you might get more discussion about design of a project. Uh, and that's the nature of the public hearing, and the council knows that sometimes issues change from a technical one to a bit more political when you have a public hearing. From the standpoint of staff approvals, uh, this is the empowerment side. And I can tell you, when we started this two years ago, there was a complaint that staff was approving too much. Um, we pulled back a little bit. Uh, we heard that. That came from a community member that hired an attorney, that the staff was doing a little bit too much. The task force is saying we should do more. What we've been asked to do is try to come up with a mechanism that says, "What can we do over the counter?" This is very restrictive. This is probably more cumbersome than the task force wants us to be, and it would basically be building colors, re-roofs, walls, minor additions less than ten percent, except for single-family residential, where it would be forty percent, uh, additional building coverage. And then, uh, any other items designated by the planning commission, uh, we've talked to the city attorney, and, and he would really prefer that we codify what the staff can approve. A few years ago, the planning commission said industrial buildings on local industrial streets, not on major thoroughfares or secondaries. If they're really good and well-designed, design review likes them, staff approves them. We're gonna probably have to recommend that to manage our time and resources, um, and do some staff approvals in that way. And if an applicant will get to the, the appeal of staff approvals, it's an easy process. From the standpoint, you know, minor architectural approval applications could be approved by staff or designees with or without consultation of the, uh, architectural approval subcommittee. We get something that comes in, and I'll just use an example, it's a remodel and it looks like that, I'm not sure we need to take it to design review. We come in and have a remodel that looks like that, we're probably going to design review. Um, and I, I put this up as an example. This was the first submittal on a project, design review said, "No, not down near the Canyon Hotel." This is what was approved. Substantial upgrade. Planning commission never had to see that officially. They saw a project that was substantially better, uh, because of just saying it's not good enough for this town. And they made a very definitive statement to that applicant, and they hired a new design team fairly quickly. They realized they couldn't get there with this team, they had to bring in a new team.
If I can, Doug, though, interestingly enough, the first submittal might have been approved in this town twenty-five, thirty years ago. Would've been, "Okay, that's all right."
Twenty-five, thirty years ago, it would've been too good.
Too, yeah. And by today's standards, you can't do it that way, because our standards are higher. We demand a, of different quality, and we want to maintain a certain fabric. So you had to go out. Because we do have buildings that look like that, because they were approved decades ago.
And, and, you know, actually, in certain locations and certain types of projects, with some adjustments, that project may be, uh, on the edge of acceptable. You know, design review is never gonna make a great project. They happen on their own. They absolutely walk in the door and they happen, because an owner made a decision to do something exceptional.
Clearly.
You know? This owner cranked it up, hired a good design team. This owner, that's the way it came in the door. Uh, so if you take a look at what's really good, we don't need to help it, we need to get out of the way. It's the really bad stuff, it's the marginal, that we really need to help. And normally, the bar is only raised up to acceptable. It never gets to exceptional through design review, unless somebody makes a decision and changes their design team. And every once in a while, I call an owner and say, "You have a problem with your design team." Uh, that's a very risky thing for me to do, uh, because I've made somebody very unhappy. But occasionally, I have to do it, and occasionally David gets the phone call that maybe I was a little too tough on the design team. I did it at Arabia East Palm Canyon for the apartment complex. The developer didn't like it. They got approved in one meeting with a new design team. They had been backed eight times with the previous one. The, uh, appeal of staff items, um, if staff makes a, a decision or a recommendation and an applicant doesn't like it, and it's a staff approval item, it goes on the next planning commission agenda without a fee, without a letter, and we don't put it on as an appeal. We put it on as, "Here's an application, here's the staff recommendation," and let the planning commission look at it. We try not to create an adversarial relationship going into a staff approval that's being pumped up to the planning commission. Let's see. The Brown Act, uh, there was a concern two years ago that we weren't Brown Act, there was a concern two years ago that we weren't complying with the Brown Act. We fixed that immediately. We have been ever since. The meetings are now in this room as opposed to a smaller conference room, so I don't think there's an issue there. Public notice for Architectural Approval Applications, this is starting to get into new ground in a couple of areas. And what I did was anything with a circle is new. You know, it's an actual new policy. We may be doing things differently with some of the other, but these are new items. By right of zone projects that are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and the easiest way to say that right now is an urban infill project less than five acres. They're exempt, they don't need a public hearing. There's a few other criteria, actually, it's pages of criteria, but that's probably the most important one. No public hearing for a project that the state has said probably doesn't have an impact on the environment. Hillside development, we've had some controversies recently, growing pains. People have been really comfortable with that vacant lot next door. Fido really likes not having a fence, and all of a sudden, a grading machine shows up next door and people are mad. Currently, what we do is we send a courtesy notice the minute the application comes in. It's unofficial, it's not required, it's a courtesy. What we're proposing that we would do is still do the courtesy notice, also notify the owners of the abutting property when the Planning Commission is going to look at that house. In the event there's controversy, the Planning Commission would then set that house for public hearing. We would then notice the abutting property owners, not 400 feet, but the abutting property owners, for a public hearing on that house so that Dave Alshire and I don't have to act as mediators on why people didn't get to see a project officially. Even though they may have looked at it, they may have come in and said, it looks fine. Boy, when it gets built or starts to being built, people get really concerned. They don't understand the plan. So, at least we'd have a process for a public hearing. From a legal standpoint, case law standpoint, we think this is a better process to protect the city and the decision-making and both property owners' rights, both the builder as well as the neighbor. Items that require a public hearing, you're going to do the Design Review at the same time, no change in procedure. New procedure, if a project is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, it's six acres, we have to do an environmental assessment on that, we're going to do a public hearing. Right now, there's certain types of projects that can kind of wiggle through the system technically with a newspaper notice, but no public hearing. So, we're going to fix that. It probably will affect plus or minus six projects a year. So, it's not significant. Those developers won't even blink. They're going to be professional developers, they're going to be surprised if we don't do a public hearing. So, I don't think we're going to get much, much feedback on that new procedure. ONIP, how are we getting the word out? We currently send agendas out to neighborhood leaders, both Planning Commission and Design Review. We hope that they're reviewing it to see what's going on in their neighborhood. If anybody wants a notice of a project, we'll send them the agenda and the notice. But if people want to be provided with the agendas and they're not a neighborhood leader, we do have a subscription program. Right now, everybody wants free agendas. We have a fee for them, and I'm just reminding the Council that I'm going to have to tell some people, you have to pay for the agendas or look them up on the Internet because we post the agendas there also. Those are the key recommendations. The next step, as I said, would be to, you know, go back to Planning Commission. If you want us to engage the task force and they want to put a committee together, go through this, draft an ordinance, and hopefully get it on the books as soon as possible. Mr. Mayor, that completes my overview. And if you want to ask any questions on any of the projects on the board, you can't because they're not on the agenda.
Thank you, Doug. Council, questions on the process?
Save you having to say that, Trish.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Let's say we have a project, a person brings this project that they think is absolutely fabulous, but it isn't. How do you convey that to the person and/or recommend a new Design Review team or, how do you do that? Because even though we may not think that that project is good, that person does, and they're invested emotionally in it. So, what do we do?
What we do is, is, you know, hopefully, the applicant has worked with us on a pre-application basis. That's staff, applicant, that's before the formal process starts. If we see a project that, you know, has design deficiencies, we try to tactfully address those. Sometimes it's difficult because most projects, the best work you're going to get out of the design team is their first effort. You know, occasionally, the developer held somebody back and the design team says, thank you very much, when the developer goes to the restroom and says, now I can do my work and I can make this better. But most of the time, you get the best. We try to coach them at staff level. We offer a pre-application review, no fee for Design Review. So, you can come up to Design Review before you've spent your entire design budget. If an applicant has a significant project and they aren't sure that they got enough feedback from Design Review, we do study sessions with the Planning Commission. I don't tell a developer that his design team has a problem unless they failed repeatedly with the system. You know, they have, we have to let the system try to guide them before I'm going to try to maybe make a change in the design team. And when I do that, you know, I call the owner and I said, you, you've been to Design Review three, four, five times? The Planning Commission's looked at it, they've said they're uncomfortable with it. Your designers, I think, working very hard, but I think you're, you're at a point where you need some help. And sometimes, they'll bring in a design architect, they'll do the pretty sketches.
Right.
And the previous architect will do all the working drawings.
All the production drawings.
And the production. So, it is a collaborative. I do that maybe once or twice a year. I do not do that very often. Most projects, much to the surprise of the general public, get approved with the team that we start with and do reasonably well. Obviously, the drawings I put up here tonight are, for the most part, some of the best that we see. Sometimes, we're working at Design Review or at staff level with what we call our Safeway Bag Plans, you know, that they're, they're sketched on pieces of paper and you really can't issue a permit on them. Those are the tough ones. And I think the task force, you know, those are the customers that probably take the greatest amount of time. They probably take the greatest amount of experience from staff to try to figure out how you tell somebody that can't maybe even afford a designer, let alone an architect, that there's no way the city can issue a permit on a sketch, you know, that doesn't meet code or you can't even tell what it is. Those are the ones that are really tough. Those are the ones that, that the staff person that's maybe been in the business one or two years, maybe been in Palm Springs six months or three months, that's really hard work. And we've got some permit technicians in building that have been here for, for an awfully long time. Those are the customers they struggle with. Those are the hard ones, especially if it's subject to Design Review.
Okay. Let's say that person's interested in developing a project. How, how would we take them through that process so they'd be introduced to perhaps the quality, the standard, et cetera, so that they are not setting themselves up for disappointment?
Well, we, we always encourage our applicants to go out and look at what's built in the community. And, you know, if they have a particular style of architecture or project design, we try to give them ideas of what projects to look like, look at. If we have time, and maybe I'll come back to if we have time, we'll pull out plans and show people. Most new development projects, most developers start with a concept. So, they walk in the door with something. At transactional real estate stage, they'll usually talk to me. I'm going to buy this property, I'm going to get a 60-day or a six-month option on the property. Can I get through the entitlement process? What type of project can I do? We talk about, you know, style of architecture. I start a good portion of the projects, you know, philosophically with a developer. And then, they bring a design team. And we sometimes ask them to bring us a flimsy sketch of a site plan, you know, and that's very conceptual work so we can see where they're going before they spend 20 or $30,000. Some design teams, I can tell you right now, we never hear from, they mail us the application and say, what do you think? And those sometimes are tough when they come from Omaha.
Now, we would have difficulty making referrals, but is there a website that a person can go to and see perhaps the work of different people in the city that we could refer them to?
We, we can't make referrals and, you know, relative.
Well, no, I'm not saying to referrals, but is there a website?
I'm going to take advantage of the EDC report, you know, they refer to an ombudsman. I need and my staff members need a life preserver to throw people. You know, if I can't hint who somebody could talk to, they go down to Mr. Mills' office. He can't look at their work for three months because he's busy. They go to Mr. Chiaffi, can't look at it. They've touched all the architects and they can't either get them to do the work because they're very busy, or they can't afford them. Who do we send them to? And that's, that's the question. We can only refer people to the Yellow Pages. We can send them to AIA groups, things of that nature, but making that contact is very difficult. 15 years ago, we used to have, I called them my, our safety valve group of people. They were designers that worked for local architects that worked at night. And they would take the small jobs, and we had five or six, that we'd say, you know, if you can't hire an architect, here's a list of people. Things have changed, we no longer have a list like that. My staff wouldn't dare to use it. We're, we're tied up in that regard where we can't help people. And I worked with the phone book. I flipped the phone book out and asked the owner what type of architecture they like, what type of style of project. And most of the architects have areas where they have expertise in style of architecture. And sometimes, I'll give them four or five that practice that style of architecture. And then, I tell them to interview at least three. But we use the phone book a lot. The page is torn out occasionally. That's probably our biggest challenge, is trying to hook people up with somebody that can prepare plans and do it efficiently. And right now, the professional design teams are so busy, people call us up and say, could you help us find somebody? We can't get anybody to even see us for three or four months. So, that's a challenge.
Okay. I just want to say, I see a lot of very good things in here. I just have a concern about, I guess it's page two. As proposed, the Architectural Approval Subcommittee process and recommendations are advisory and the Planning Commission may review all subjects discussed by the Architectural Approval Committee. That then means that they can give an approval and it goes to the Planning Commission and they can send it back.
Can I give you a good example of how that works? And I almost put the plans up.
Yes, you can do that and you can also tell me how that is different from what we currently experience.
Well, you know, one, the last two years, we haven't experienced it. I personally looked at the agendas and the conformed, and I went through and looked at every item on every agenda to take a look at whether or not we have a revolving door. The past few two years, we don't. It's because of the area up there. We've been talking to the Planning Commission about that on a regular basis for two years. Here, here's a great example. Extended Stay America on Tocotz. It had gone through Design Review a couple of times. They got all the detailing right. It was up before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission was that close to approving it. And one of the Planning Commissioners looked at one of the little detailed exhibits and said, is that an S tile? We came around and looked at the exhibit, looked back in the details and the guts of the plan, yeah. And they said, we don't want S tiles on Tocotz for this type of building, we want a two-piece barrel tile. We want the authentic tile. He caught something that would have been a big mistake on Tocotz. You know, that, that's the type of review that can occur. It's the safety net, you know, and, and I think philosophically, you have to have decision-makers and advisors that agree they're not going to repeat Design Review unless they see something that's really important. And the Planning Commissioners did that today on a project. They had some questions, they started going down the road of talking about design, they pulled back, approved the project 4-0 and said, have Design Review look at these details when it comes back. So, it worked. And it's philosophically, how do you get that to occur? It's no different than the Planning Commissioners sometimes ask me, why did the Council overrule us? They're as sensitive to that issue as the Design Review members are of the Commissioners overruling them. So, the Commissioners are cognizant of that. I don't think you could codify it, the city attorney might have a suggestion.
Well, I was just going to indicate, I think there is a change, I think there is a change here on to deal with exactly that problem. And the city manager was very insistent that we come up with some way of dealing with that. And that was to put the Planning Commission member at the Design Review. I mean, that, the, the concern with this is that if the, you have a Planning Commission member who went through that whole design discussion and knows exactly what was discussed and, and all the back and forth, and now he's sitting there at the Planning Commission meeting, he will be able to bring all of that discussion to the table. And that is a change. You know, Doug didn't circle that because theoretically, that isn't different, but practically, it's different by the attendance of the Planning Commissioner at both meetings.
Well, when I reviewed the composition of the committee, that's why I questioned, what would be the reason for returning? But if that's your failsafe, I, I guess it could, it can work and it's different.
If I may, the idea was, is when we have a, a good analogy, a council Subcommittee, that when it comes back to the council body as a whole, the Subcommittee members, in essence, would carry the day by bringing the information back. The idea was the same with this, that the Planning Commission member would, in essence, explain to the other members why it was approved. So, in theory, he could, or she could carry the day for that project on the design.
Or at least attempt to carry the day.
Or attempt to, yes.
And the body can still return it back down to the Subcommittee.
And for the past two years, we've had a Planning Commissioner assigned to Design Review. They come on a monthly basis, you know, and so we have a Planning Commissioner there. And I think one of the reasons why the past couple of years, when we've looked at number of restudies, it's really gone down. And at the same time, we've talked to Design Review that they have to be more focused because I think for a while, they were just letting things slide through because they thought the Commission would catch it. And I think we've got a much more interactive group. We've made some changes on Design Review and I think they're starting to look at projects much more carefully. And they're getting, they're getting comfortable with their role because it is new, a new group of people, for the most part, that are participating in Design Review. Prior to this changeover, we had people that had participated for 20 and 25 years.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Mayor. As Doug mentioned, I, I worked on this issue when I was on Planning Commission for a couple of years and then in between Planning Commission and Council, and then also on, having been on Council. And it's been, this system that we're looking at now has been reviewed over and over and over. And this isn't what we started with by any means, this is where we, where we ultimately ended up with. I personally feel that this solves the problem as a planning, when, you know, when I was on, on, on the Planning Commission, we had problems. We had problems with the level, as Doug mentioned, of review of, of the Architectural Review Board. Mainly, the biggest one that I saw was a consistency issue dealing with the fact that they wouldn't have the same people there all the time. Because it was a very informal group. It wasn't established. And having been in the prior years on Architectural Review for about 10 years in this city, I've been on, until I was elected Council, I was on Architectural Review in Rancho Mirage for 17 years. The process works well with, with the, and, and none of them are, have, have, have been And none of them have been like this. This is kind of a hybrid of all of them. I think if you look at the city of Rancho Mirage, you look at the city of Palm Springs, you see the process works. The makeup of the group is extremely important. The way they interact together is extremely important. And most importantly, the chairman is extremely important. And the chairman has to guide, has to guide things, has to take control, has to control in the process, I mean, to make sure that you're getting through and to bring things to consensus. Before, since 1990 or whenever, we've been on the current process, there has never been a vote of the members of the review. And as a planning commissioner, because there was never a vote, you didn't really know where the Architectural Review Board stood on stuff. And you were forced into trying to look at it as a planning commissioner, to try to form your own opinions of it. Because there wasn't really a solid recommendation coming from the group as I see it. And we're talking about the marginal projects. We're not talking about the things that are good. This, I think, solves that problem. If, as Doug explained, the little item up there, that the planning commission needs to know what their expected role in this, and I think they will abide by that role. And that is not to pull everything off because now they're getting a consistent review that I don't think they have gotten in the past by the same people. So if something is restudied, it comes back to the same group that restudied it the first time. And hopefully, that will solve a lot of the discontent that we've had over the years, that we've heard over the years. So I'm anxious to put this back into effect because it will definitely streamline the process without a doubt. It will move things along further. I think the task force looked at that, and it became a point of the task force, and I think they understood what the purpose of it was. We talked about making Architectural Review its own board or its own commission so it didn't have, so items would not have to go to planning. But it creates a lot of other problems. Essentially, it creates a staff person full-time. It creates full agendas. It creates a lot of infrastructure that we don't really need. And I think the two bodies, planning commission and Architectural Review, will work together and make the thing work. And I think the only one little thing that I have on this whole thing was having to do on the second bullet point, Doug, under one on the first page, was regarding the makeup. And that's that the alternate member should be a design professional in some way, shape, or form also. I think it's very important to, I mean, if we go forward with this, when the planning commission will make the appointments, I think it's very important that the planning commission look to experience. And the reason I'm saying that is that we don't want to start this out with an inexperienced group that hasn't done this function for a while and understand how you move things along, how you bring things to consensus, and the fact that what you need to look at and what you don't need to look at, what's important, what isn't important. I think we need a mix of the older guys and the younger guys, or girls, whatever their case may be.
How about old guys and young girls? Just trying to balance it out for you, that's all. A little bit of both. I'll give you some comments if I may. We've looked at a number of development task force, planning, building, engineering, the architectural review, and I just want to state the following. Whatever it is we eventually do, I would hope that it does not become a system, a structure of review that would preclude us from doing future architecturally significant work. Now, what does that mean? Okay. Could the tramway gas station be built under current codes? Would it, having been allowed, permitted, encouraged by our design codes? Would the Plaza Theater sign be permitted under current sign ordinances? And I would suggest you that the sign ordinance would have a little problem doing a pole side of that height and so on and so forth. So whatever we're doing with all the restrictions and all the qualifiers and all the enhancements and whatever else you want to build, I think we still have to have some kind of a system that rewards and encourages high-quality design, not just repetition of things. And you start seeing styles and motifs occurring. We're in a very strong case right now architecturally of this retro phase. Everybody's doing retro. Everyone's doing big blank walls, bold colors and otherwise. So that seems to be the one that everybody wants. But if there's another phase, whether it's a return to something in the past or creating a new architectural style, I would just hope that we don't in some way govern it in such a fashion that it can't happen in Palm Springs, you've got to go elsewhere. And I don't know what that is because sometimes someone wants to build something bigger or more density or more style, but I just don't want to get to a point where we start discouraging. I think the system you've got, especially in this last presentation on the AAC or the ARB, or however you want to phrase this review committee, affords a process for those who have quality design. And I think Doug's comment about the good product comes in the first day and it's out by 5:00. You can't get away fast enough. It's the right project. You get something that looks good 25 years ago, and you've got to sit down and talk to somebody. And you can encourage them to upgrade their designs and change their densities and look at different palettes of materials and colors. But if they're non-responsive, and to answer your earlier question, Mr. Oden, what do you do? I will suggest to you, in the days gone by when I practice, and maybe Mr. Mills in his current practice does this, when you leave a venue that you're comfortable in, whether it's the city you live in or a neighboring city you've practiced in, and you go somewhere where you've never worked before, it's somewhat ill-advised from a design standpoint or a developer standpoint to just come in with the answer without first a pre-meeting. If you're going to acquire land, and I appreciate Doug's comment about looking at land, you have a contingency in the escrow that allows you some period of time to begin to review, to see what your entitlements are, to see if in fact you can build what you want to. Otherwise, "I can only build four units. I was going to build 44 units. Well, the density is all wrong. You can't build that." So someone's got to do some front work. It's when, not all cases, but in some minor cases, someone doesn't do any homework and comes up and says, "Hey, can I have a permit?" And you have to somehow delicately tell them you've got a couple of issues that have to be resolved. And they've missed a number of points. To address your earlier comment too about how do you select a local architect, I can recall when I practiced getting a phone call from a potential client. I can't recall if I got the job or not. But his indication was, "I got your name along with five other names from the building department or from the planning department as someone who has done work in Palm Springs. Can I come meet you?" Wasn't like, "Hey, you're the guy. Fix my problem. I got your name, a list of other ones." Because they even stated they're not permitted to recommend. People start sending work just to Genie because when they send it to Genie, we've got a flag going up. But if you send it to all five members, say, "Well, we'll pick one of the guys. We'll figure out which one you want." Then it's all right. Then it's an okay practice. And the difficulty is, how do you deal with someone who's just not quite on the right track, the wrong tempo, is at the wrong beat, and it just won't play here? But again, I think the work, the whole evening, Nick Dern said there's some interesting work and changes about how we can streamline and facilitate. Just want to make sure that the door is wide enough, open enough for new creative, bold ideas because someone's going to look back 20 years and go, "You know, when all those guys were on the council, everything just kind of went to mush, and no one did anything exciting anymore." So hopefully, the design opportunities are still there, if not encouraging them to be there. I mean, you couldn't build some of the houses that we have on the hillside, whether it's Bob Hope's house or the house that Albert Frey lived on, it wouldn't be permitted today. You couldn't build the Old Donald House. You couldn't build a house of that nature without a massive challenge to the system. And then you'd have public outcry about destroying mountain faces and otherwise. So you have issues there. So just again, let's just be aware of that and try to encourage greatness if we can. We've got some incredible opportunities still for development in Palm Springs. I think this is good work. I don't know who actually produced all this. I'm sure Mr. Mills had a hand in it, but I'm very encouraged by it. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Quickly, to the point that you're making. What you just said kind of is why I went to the extreme of suggesting to planning commission that they look at people that have been on the board before, who understand the board, understand Palm Springs, and what Palm Springs is, what our general plan calls for, and that is a very eclectic look. And we have approved in the past projects like ultra-modern projects, postmodern projects, and we've approved the Givenchy, which is, I mean, it isn't style, it's how well that style, whatever style you choose, how well that style is done. And I think we've been very good in the past about echoing that. And I think that point needs to be emphasized to whatever the new group is.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Ready anything else, sir?
That means we could entertain French Baroque Coco style even?
I love Coco. Little marshmallows? Now we're talking.
So as direction, we should bring a formal, we should go ahead and formalize this review, this design review action.
This has not gone before the committee, right?
The task force has not seen this. If the council's pleasure is, we'll contact their chair, have him put a small group together, hopefully, and let's go through this in one meeting. And we can answer a lot of different questions on a lot of different city processes. We've reviewed every city in the valley and a number in California to look at different models.
Because Keith, again, they will be appointing the members of the committee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. See, no further business before the council. It is 10:01. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.